Thank you, Mayor. We are now live.
Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, April 30th, 2020, East Lansing City Council meeting. Before we get started, I'd like everybody to know that today is our first virtual meeting, so bear with us if we have to work through any technical issues. Anybody who has called in or who does call in before we have public comments will be allowed to speak during public comments. Council members, for discussion, we're going to try just raising your hand, and I'll call on you so everybody knows those who's speaking. If that doesn't work, we will try something else, but I think that will work. If I don't call your name, please state your name. And when needed, we will use a roll call vote so that everybody in the public knows how all council people voted. So our first item on the agenda is the roll call vote, or is the roll call, sorry. Mr. Mills?
Councilmember Babcock?
President.
Councilmember Gregg?
Present.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Byer?
Here. The next item on the-
I'd just like to make a note that council members, this is Mayor Pro Tem Stevens, should state their name before speaking when not called upon to, for those that are calling in, so people know who's talking. I don't know before.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I move approval of today's agenda. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Babcock. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the last three meetings. I move approval of these minutes. Can I please have a second?
Greg, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gregg. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda, item 1.4, is approval of the adoption of a special rule pursuant to MCL 15.263-1 to limit public comment to two minutes per individual. I will move approval of item 1.4, and can I have a second? Seconded by, seconded by, thank you, by Councilmember Babcock. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to this. I would entertain a, or I'll make a motion to amend that to five minutes per individual rather than two minutes per individual.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to discuss your motion, your amendment?
So I understand where this is coming from, and I understand that accessibility on these meetings is new, and this is something to make sure that we're keeping on track and that everybody gets a chance to talk. But in general, I am less permissible towards limiting public comment. And so I, two minutes per individual seems very succinct and very short. And if we're basing this off of other communities such as Lansing that do limit public comment, they have more time than what we're proposing here. So I want to increase it at least to five minutes. Although generally, I'm not supportive of something like this. I would be okay with the idea if it's at five minutes, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Meadows?
I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem's comments here. You know, our rules require the mayor to indicate to people in this section of the city council meeting that we encourage them to limit their comments to five minutes. We've never enforced a five-minute limitation, but we have encouraged people over and over again. Because of the nature of what we're doing right now, I think it is entirely appropriate for us to say, hey, it's going to be five minutes max, and that's it. Because we really need to figure out how this is going to work for us to begin with. So I'm very supportive of the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? On, sorry, on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, I am going to ask Mr. Mills to call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Yes. So we're now to the motion as amended, 1.4, and the motion has already been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Mills will call the roll.
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Yes. So just to explain how this will work, when we get to it, you will have five minutes to speak if you're calling in, and you will get a warning when you have 30 seconds left, letting you know that you have 30 seconds left. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 2.1, communications. And the first is all written communications that have been received by council are posted on the online agenda packet. If anybody has sent something that they would like to have posted that's not there, please let me know, and I will make sure it's posted. Next is item 2.2, communications from the audience. So the way we'll do this is Mr. Mills will call the last three digits of the phone numbers of the people who have called in or zoomed in. Each person will have five minutes, as I said, with 30 seconds left. You will be interrupted briefly to let you know. If you are called on and you don't wish to speak, you can pass. And you're not required to do this, but if you wish, you can state your name and your address. I will have, hand this over to Mr. Mills, and he will go through every person. If a council person wants to speak after the speaker and before Mr. Mills calls the same, the next number, if you would like to address the speaker, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Mr. Mills?
The first person is, last three digits are 725.
725 has been unmuted and may now address council. Again, this is a caller ending in the last three digits of their phone number, 725. You may address council if you'd like. Thank you, and we'll move on to the next caller.
Next caller, last three digits are 333.
333, you are now unmuted.
Thank you. This is Chris Root at 729 Sunset Lane. I wanted to make a comment, mostly questions about the first business agenda item, which is the CDBG allocation, especially the supplemental part regarding the coronavirus pandemic. Couple of questions that I hope might be addressed when you get to that item on the agenda. The first is, I'm gathering that the small business loan staff recommendation is for all of the amount of the supplemental, CDBG, which is about $300,000. I'm interested in that. Another is, there's an income requirement, which is related to this being CDBG money, about a requirement of being low or moderate income, and that's applied to either the owner of a business that would apply or to employees. What I'm wondering is, it says that there can be up to 75 employees in a business that applies. What if some employees are above the 80% of AMI cutoff and some are below? Is there a certain percentage of your employees that need to be below the 80% of AMI if you're basing the eligibility on employee income rather than owner income? Also, is there going to be, are you thinking of having any criterion about whether a business has received any other grant or loan regarding the CDB, the COVID-19 impact on businesses? And the third question I have, or fourth, I guess, is it appears that the concept is to withhold from a possible grant $50 per employee for six months so that the company then has to, the business has to prove that the employee is still employed by the business. If there were, you know, a lot of employees, which businesses could have to be eligible, $50 per employee being withheld could be a lot of the grant. So I'm wondering what kind of the intention is about whether it's a grant you get immediately or a grant that you, that's kind of, you receive later on, when it's, although you have to get through that period. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Meadows? You're muted, sir.
Yeah, I just, I just unmuted, but I just want to clarify. We're just setting a public hearing for this at this point. We're not making any decision with regard to these items today, correct?
That's correct, from our perspective.
May we continue with the next caller?
Next caller is last three digits, 410.
410, you've been unmuted and may address council.
Um, yes, this is Trish Riley, and I'm at 1527 Old Mill, my home, and I'm at 131 Albert. We own Harper's. I would like to talk about the restaurant and entertainment licensing, the recommendation that has been in front of you regarding giving a $2,000 credit to everybody. I believe you will receive the letter from us, my husband, and from me. And I believe it should be a percentage, some other consideration than just a lump sum, because the lump sum would basically alleviate any fee for many establishments and leave it down to one or two organizations to pay the lump sum. In reference to us, it would be like $17,000 for us. So I feel like it should be a percentage as opposed to a dollar amount. In addition, I'll let my husband talk about his idea that would later, in reference to another, and how with communication issues with all the businesses in East Lansing. So I'm finished. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Stevens?
Hey, Trish, would you mind repeating just that last part of what you said? You're breaking in and out there just a little bit.
Um, I was saying that you, in my letter, we've stipulated some, another idea that would help passively replace this restaurant licensing, and also it would enhance communications with all the businesses in East Lansing. So it's in our letter, but I let my husband go through that because that was his idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next caller, last three digits is 448.
448.
Pass, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
The next caller, last three digits is 566.
566. Hi, this is Pat Riley, 1527 Old Mill Road. I'm wearing a couple of different hats today and speaking to you. First is, as president of the Responsible Hospitality Council, we'd like to thank you for taking up this item that I had sent a previous letter to you all about, which is reducing the restaurant and entertainment license fees. We're appreciative of the fact that you're addressing this issue, that during this time for struggling businesses throughout the country, and much less East Lansing, all the help that businesses can get is definitely appreciated. In regards to the resolution that I've read, I'd like to comment on that from the perspective of the RHC, and that is, when we had requested some form of abatement of the restaurant and entertainment license fees, we had assumed that any action taken by the council in the city would be done equally across all licensees, meaning proportionally. So if you abated 100%, everybody would be abated 100%. If you abated 50%, you would abate 50% of all the license fees. We did not expect, nor did, nor do we support, a single lump sum which affects disproportionately our members and disproportionately other people within the city. I can only state that we believe the only fair resolution, if you are going to abate any form of the restaurant license fees, it should be done on a percentage basis. As I, I don't know if you have all received the letters I sent yesterday, but in those letters, it basically states, somebody could have zero restaurant license fees and someone could have $17,000 in restaurant license fees. That seems to be disproportionate entirely and could hardly be considered to be a fair distribution of the revenue to the city. As Trish has alluded to earlier, there would be some definite, well, let me put it a different way, a disproportionate, a few number of restaurant, restaurants would be actually supplying the vast, vast majority of the revenue to the city while allowing all the other restaurants to not pay anything. So once again, as an RHC, as speaking for the RHC, I don't think that is necessarily fair or equitable. Moving on to another hat that I wear is a person within the city and a business owner, and that is also handled in my letter. We have done research over the past couple of years on other cities within the state, basically the top 16 cities in terms of population and how they treat businesses and restaurants with regard to licensing and entertainment and alcohol. In my letter, there was a spreadsheet attached which shows the effects and what they charge, and there, out of those 16, there are only a few number who actually charge any fees whatsoever, and the ones who do only charge between $50 and 100, or $1,347 in fees. The rest charge nothing in fees, and though included in those are three college/university towns, typical in size and nature to what we have in East Lansing, with restaurants and licensees in the same capacity ranges, same types of venues, same types of patrons. And they do not charge any restaurant license fees or entertainment license fees. The second part of this is, in our research based on business licensing, we discovered, and I believe this to be true, that there is no central database within the city for all the light, for all businesses. Based on the census data from 2012 that the federal government does on businesses and firms within the ci, all cities in the United States, there are over 2,500 firms within the city of East Lansing. As I said in my letter, anytime you would like to contact as a city or a council or a council member to any of these firms operating, the, the effect, the only effective way you can do so is through a press release of some form. You have no ability to say, give me all the gas stations, give me all the doctors, give me all the dentists, give me all the restaurants, give me any segment. So therefore-
You have 30 seconds remaining?
Therefore, we would like to propose a different licensing fee structure and have you charge a nominal fee, which is basically a clerical fee, to collect all that information so when you have an emergency, you can notify. When you want to remain, let's say, transparent to the business community, you can send direct messages directly to them via email or any other form of electronic communication. I'll, I know I'm close to the end of my five minutes, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, or you can tell me that my time is up.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Riley, thank you for coming on, talking to us a little bit as well. Thank you for your suggestions and some of the opinions that you, that you wrote in that letter. I'd be happy to discuss maybe offline, a little bit more in detail, some of your ideas moving forward. So I might ask you to send me an email so we can follow up on that. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr.? Oh, sorry, Mr. Riley, go ahead.
I'd be happy to do so, and in fact, one of the things I probably should have said is that the expediency with regard to any abatement isn't critical as of today. It wouldn't matter if you did this in another meeting in a couple of weeks. I'd love the opportunity to be able to discuss with any council member the ideas that we have or the position that the RHC has so that maybe you can more fully understand where we're coming from and maybe come up with possible solutions that would benefit all.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Riley? Mr. Mills?
So the next person is last three digits, 731.
And we do have two callers with the last three digits, 731, so we'll unmute you one at a time.
Thank you. No comment today.
And then the next, 731.
Thank you. No comment today.
The next caller is 959.
959, you may address council if you would like. One more call for last three digits of their phone number, 959. Do you have any comments for council? Okay, and the next caller, please?
Next caller is 963.
Hi, this is Alice Digger, 621 Sunset Lane. I appreciate council and the city manager answering, to some degree, my questions this week regarding how the emergency, state of emergency works with regard to who has control of what. I tried charting out the answers that I got, and I'm still confused. I don't expect you on this meeting to sort all that out. What I basically had as a question was just trying to understand for the people of East Lansing, what democracy looks like under a state of emergency, since it looks like we may be under one for a long time. So I'm trying to understand what changes in terms of who makes decisions, our rights, those kinds of things, and that's been difficult to understand. Before the emergency came down, councils had talked strongly about a council of equals, about all decisions being made among the five. It looks like the state of emergency gives the mayor more power than typically happens. I know that our mayor had stated that she, at least before the emergency, was very interested in maintaining an equal base of power, so I'm trying to understand, has that changed? I'm trying to understand are there decisions that are being made by the city manager that are not readily apparent, that would ordinarily be made at the council level? So those are things I still, at this point, don't really understand and would like to understand better, just so we can figure out how decisions are being made. The city manager gave an example yesterday, the ability under the state of emergency to send the $10,000 to Haven House to assist with homelessness. That's obviously the kind of decision that would normally be made at the council level, and it was given as an example of something that can be made just by the city manager. As we head into what is going to be a bloodletting in terms of the budget, it seems more important than ever that budget decisions actually be made in public and be made by the people elected, by the people of East Lansing. So if what we mean by the state of emergency is that budget decisions are now going to be changed in terms of how they're being made, I want to make sure people understand that and understand that that's what's going to be happening, is that major budgetary decisions. But normally, we've made at the city council level might perhaps be made in a way that we don't readily see until later and made specifically by the city manager. So these are things that I just still don't understand and would appreciate assistance and understanding. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
And it looks like we have one more caller, but she is not, she doesn't have her phone number. It's a non-staff member named Marilyn Fine.
Hi, this is Marilyn Fine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm a lifelong member of and resident of East Lansing and have recently moved into Meridian Township, but I am a person that frequents many of the businesses in East Lansing. And I just wanted to make sure that you heard from someone who contributes to the revenue of taxes that go on in East Lansing. I've previously been on the Housing Commission in East Lansing, so I know how important this is all, to all of us. Any fees and levies to any of the businesses in East Lansing should be probably eliminated during the period of time that all the businesses are closed, and they should be eliminated in a fair basis across the board. And I would suggest that you take a look at that in being fair and equal. I heard Mr. Riley's presentation about other locations in the Michigan area and how most of them don't have those fees. But I would ask that you please take a look at a couple of bigger, more important issues once you decide to eliminate those fees, and that is the fact that Michigan State University is highly considering not bringing students back on campus for the fall 2020 semester. This is a time period that all the science that's out there right now says that probably with the heat until November, the COVID-19 virus would be killed. However, if they, in their infinite wisdom, decide to close to campus, you really have to take a look at the ramifications of not having 50,000 students in the East Lansing area and what that's going to mean. What that's going to mean for not only the businesses, they will close, you understand that, they will devastate the real estate value of the homes in the greater East Lansing and Lansing area. In addition to that, students will challenge the leases that they've signed for the September, August, September, fall 2020 semester, and it's just going to go downhill. It's going to devastate the community. In addition to that, if there's no students on campus, they will not bring back any support staff on, on the halls and on the departments at Michigan State. And you would probably consider the 1% income tax that you took so long to levy against the Michigan State University campus. I respectfully just am asking that you consider these things before we dilly-dally over maybe ineffective license and/or business fee and make it fair to everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
And it looks like that was the last person there.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is communications from the mayor and council members. Today, we will start with Councilmember Gregg.
Um, I have a lot of comments, but I just want to say that I, I share all of the revenue concerns that we heard both from, from Marilyn and from the Rileys. I am, it's, yeah, the, I think the, the long-term economic fallout of this is going to be devastating, and we have a pretty strong mission to do- and we have a pretty strong mission to do whatever we can to mitigate that in terms of our business community, but also our residents. So I think for everyone that has expressed those concerns, I absolutely share those concerns. It's keeping me up at night. This is going to be a very exciting, not in a good way, year to be serving in local government, but I'm mentally prepared to shoulder that and looking forward to talking to anybody that's got, you know, interesting creative ideas about how to mitigate that fallout.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. We'll move on to Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Councilmember Greg's thoughts. I would also like to take a moment to recognize a woman who has sewn, coordinated, distributed 12,000 face masks. Councilmember Greg, we look for moments that keep us going, that remind us of who we are in hard times, and I've never seen anything quite like that. I am absolutely in awe. Those of you who know me know I hate sewing. I flunked the Girl Scout sewing badge. My mother taught it. It was bad. So I keep hoping that some sort of asteroid will knock us all out before I actually have to sew. But this woman, this woman, this woman, has sewn and coordinated volunteers for 12,000 masks throughout this community. Thank you very much. That's worthy of public recognition. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilmember Meadows.
Thanks. Thanks for everybody who tuned in, for one thing, and I think it's been moving pretty well, actually, so far. But I just want to say ditto, ditto to what Councilmember Greg and Babcock said there. I think we're, we're going to be facing some issues that we've never faced before within our community that the impact on local businesses and also on the incomes of individuals who live within our community has been incredible. And as we look at this budget going forward, I think that, you know, we're going to have to make some decisions related to a lower revenue stream, and that's going to be tough for us as we go forward, because we just basically got ourselves into a pretty good financial situation over the last four years. So I know it's going to be a hard fight for us in a lot of meetings, but, you know, there's a lot of work ahead of us. I think that all of us are keeping the best interests of our citizens and the businesses that operate here at the forefront of every decision that we're going to make. So we'll, I'm ready to go to work, you know, whenever the mayor says, let's get back to business.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Stevens.
Thank you. I have a few comments that I will try to run through as succinctly as possible for the sake of Mayor Byers' mental health. So I, in the next few meetings that we've got two scheduled coming up virtually, I would like to see that police oversight review committee resolution on one of those agendas. I know that there have been a couple of drafts going around, and I think that because it is an issue that's kind of on the forefront of the community's mind, even though we are all going through a heck of a lot right now and dealing with a number of different issues, this is a really important one, and I don't want it to be left behind and maybe pushed back, because this is something that the community definitely really wanted to see. This is my first part. The next part is something a little bit interesting about this, this meeting style and this virtual virtual sense of people calling in and answering. I know that there are a lot of concerns with security, and there's a lot of concerns with, let's say, online trolls when it comes to virtual meetings. But I think that there's a factor of accessibility with a call-in method that does not come with an in-person meeting. And I'd just like to say, if, if this works fairly well as a call-in option, and we don't run into many problems in the next few meetings, I would maybe even want to explore the idea of having a call-in option for folks that might not be able to actually make it out to a meeting in person at regular council meetings when this is all over. Just, you know, speaking as, you know, I, I think that, you know, we have a lot of members in the community that, you know, might want to come to a council meeting, might want to speak to us, but, you know, might have a disability that's keeping them from actually coming to the meeting, or they might just literally not have the time, might have children, they might need to stay at home. And I, I think that, you know, it might be a cool option for folks. So that's just one little thing. And the next thing that I'd like to say is recognition of a couple of people and organizations that have been helping me out with some housing issues. I want to give a big shout out to Jan Bidwell, who is an East Lansing resident, but also works as a social worker with the Lansing Police Department. We've worked with a, some people that have been dealing with some housing issues and issues related to this pandemic. So I just wanted to thank her for her work on that. I'd like to also thank Capital Area Housing Partnership, who helped assist in some of those matters. And I, and I also like to thank the city manager, because me and him have gone back and forth a couple of times on rental assistance. And what is the best way to get folks assistance during this tough time? Because that's definitely an issue that's been kind of on the forefront of my mind. I think that what's presented in the CDBG funds, although I know that we talked a lot about the business support for rental housing, is something that is, that is really a great step in the right direction. Obviously, it's not everything, and I'm sure more can be done, but I do think that's a really cool thing. I know we're going to talk about it later, but I wanted to recognize the assistance and maybe going back and forth on a few different ideas. So that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you. So I thought a lot about what to say today. This is the first time I can address East Lansing since the pandemic. And a lot of times, people ask me why I would want to work in local government, why I would run for a local government office, and why I wouldn't run for some bigger office. And I always tell them that the local government is the most powerful form of government in terms of the lives of the people that live in that area. We have more power to help or to harm than the state does or the federal government. Now, this is a different time, because in a lot of ways, we have to follow the state's lead with respect to things that can close. But in general, we are here on the front lines mostly to help, hopefully always to help. So in that light, I'd like to thank our police and fire, who are out there on the front lines, taking the calls, making sure that everybody gets taken care of and gets to where they need to go. And I need everybody to understand that when they do this, they are putting themselves at risk. The governor recently recognized this. Yesterday, she talked about it. In fact, she's talked about it quite a few times. And I just want both groups of people to understand that we know that that's what you're doing and appreciate it. Secondly, I'd like to talk about council. I think as we go forward, I think we have a very good group of people to, let me turn that off, to start working on reopening and making sure that everybody stays safe, but we keep the economy and people's lives, economic lives in mind. And I don't, I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work on this with. In terms of police oversight, I agree, Councilmember or Mayor Protown, we need to start on that. I've been trying to talk to people who are very interested in that, to see if they prefer going forward virtually or waiting until a lot of people can show up in person. And I think the general consensus is that we should get started on that. So I will send the latest draft to everybody to look over, not to discuss, of course, just so you can see where we are. And finally, as we move toward reopening, which we will, we will follow the governor's lead. We really have no choice on that. I need everybody to think about what that means. What that means is we're going to risk health so that the economy can start to come back. There's no way around that. I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's what we're doing, because we're not going to eradicate the virus before things start to open up. And the way I think about it, I think about people like me, people like Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Greg, Councilmember Babcock, and even Councilmember Meadows. We go out into the public to do our jobs, to do the things that we need to do. So we will be putting ourselves at some slight risk in order for the economy to start up again. But we have a lot of people who don't have to take that much risk. And I'm thinking mostly of our senior citizens that stay home. So I just want to encourage everybody who can stay home, when we start to open up, to stay home, because this virus is deadly. We've all lost people to this virus. It's not something that you should take a risk with if you can't. And I want to, and I want to commend the city manager for thinking of our senior citizens and our police for making welfare checks on our senior citizens. And when we start to open up, Mr. Lahanas, I want to, I want to make sure that we're doing that, and we have a procedure to do it regularly, so nobody slips through the cracks. And that's all I have. The next communication is communication, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank all of our residents of East Lansing, who've been taking very seriously the stay-home order. I know lots of people have been making the right decisions and staying home. I know it's difficult, but we greatly appreciate you doing all of those efforts to keep the community safe and to limit the spread. I also want to take a moment to thank our employees, our frontline workers, Department of Public Works, police, fire, for continuing to provide those critical services. There are also a lot of people who are working in the background, from finance, communications, HR, facilities, IT, to keep those people supported and working, the frontline employees. You know, we also, people may not think about it all the time, but we employ healthcare workers in the fire department, our firefighter EMS employees, provide emergency medical transport on a regular basis. They're transporting COVID, people with COVID-related symptoms. So I want to, I want to thank them for their diligence and their efforts to stay safe, but also take care of people who are in great need and also putting themselves in personal risk. So thank you to all of our employees for their work and efforts to keep, serve the community, and also thank you to our residents during a tough time. That's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the city attorney's report. Mr. Yaden.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report this morning. I will, I do want to advise council, though, that I have been advised to leave the meeting after item 4.3, so I will not be present for the budget discussions unless council wants me present for some reason.
Thank you, Mr. Yaden.
I, why?
Councilmember Greg?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious what the, why that recommendation is. You don't leave meetings during regular meetings.
Generally, I'm not in.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to say, generally, I'm not involved in budget discussions, and I think city manager wanted to save some money on attorney fees or not have me sit through that.
Okay, there.
So council members, I am obviously fine with a different direction, but we typically have budget work sessions during the month of May, in which the city attorney doesn't participate. But if council wants to go a different direction, that is certainly no problem for me or for Mr. Yaden, I'm certain. But, but that we're just sort of holding to what we did over past years.
Okay, any more questions? All right, we will move on then to item three, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Lahanas.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we have the consent agenda for council's consideration. Item 3.1, approve a resolution to join the Michigan Water, Wastewater Agency Response Network and authorize the city manager to sign the mutual aid and assistance agreement. Item 3.2, approve a resolution to execute the cost-sharing agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for utility improvements and resurfacing of Trowbridge Road between Harrison Road and Arbor Drive and Forest Drive between South Harrison Road and College Road, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.3, approve a resolution to execute the cost-sharing agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for utility adjustments, concrete sidewalk ramp improvements, and resurfacing of North Harrison Road between Michigan Avenue and Grand River Avenue, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.4, approve a contract with Professional Services Industries, Incorporated, for as-needed material testing services in an amount not to exceed $60,000, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.5, approve an additional $150,000 in contingency funds for the Michigan Avenue and Harrison Road Sewer Improvements Project, and that the city manager be allowed to approve such increases in the project costs for Levitt and Stark Excavating. Item 3.6, approve a contract with Fedwa, Incorporated, for $113,000 to paint the Abbey Road Elevated Water Storage Tank, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.7, approve the city manager to enter into an agreement with Row Professional Services Company for engineering services associated with the fiscal year 2021 major street improvements for Abbott Road in a not-to-exceed amount of $186,937.53. 3.8, approve a contract with CND Hughes, Incorporated, for the 2020 major street improvements, Lake Lansing Road concrete repairs, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.9, approve an additional $25,000 project contingency for the White Park Improvements Project contract with Montgomery Excavating, and authorize the city manager to sign any project change orders. Item 3.10, approve a contract awarded to Crawford Door Company in the amount of $66,821 to replace the overhead garage doors at Fire Station Number One, and authorize the city manager to sign, and furthermore, approve a project contingency of $4,000. Item 3.11, award a consultant services contract to Myatt Group Architects in the amount of $36,450 for the Patriarch Park Pavilion and Restroom Renovation Project, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.12, authorize the city, authorize the mayor to extend the declaration of a local state of emergency through May 31, 2020. Item 3.13, set a public hearing for May 26, 2020, to consider ordinance 1480 and ordinance to rezone Albert Avenue Right-of-Way and City Parking Lot Number Four from C, Community Facilities, to B3, City Center Commercial District. Item 3.14, approve a resolution to receive and file a recommendation from the Downtown Management Board for continuation of the Principal Shopping District Project Special Assessment to declare the project a public necessity, to receive and file Special Assessment Rule 75 for the cost of the district of the property, and to set the date and time of two public hearings to be held, May 12, 2020, and May 26, 2020, on the continuation of the special assessment. Item 3.15, approve a contract for Tetra Tech Incorporated's Request to Change Authorization Number Three for the Michigan Avenue and Harrison Road Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $121,432, and authorize the city manager to sign. Item 3.16, approve a resolution establishing a public hearing on the preliminary fiscal year 2020 budget and tax rate for May 12, 2020. Those are all the items on the consent agenda for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lahanas. Does anybody have any questions, or anybody like anything removed from this consent agenda? Councilmember Meadows.
I don't want anything removed, but I do have a question based on Alice's question related to item 312. Maybe it's Mr. Yaden, maybe it's Mr. Lahanas. Clearly, the mayor is authorized by the resolution that we're passing to have the city manager take action under those subsections of the Emergency Management Act that are mentioned in the resolution. But for Mr. Yaden, I just want to ask the question, because I think this is the nut of what Alice is asking about. Are there things that the mayor can do or authorize that are not things that the governor or the county can authorize? Or are these, are the authorities that are in that statute the same for everybody, basically? So when the governor acts, we have to follow that, and it doesn't matter whether we have an emergency that's been declared within the city or not. So that's my question.
Mr. Yaden.
Thank you. Clearly, we have to follow the governor's orders. The governor has broader powers under the Emergency Management Act than a mayor does under the local emergency management provisions. The mayor's powers are somewhat limited, closure of streets, getting aid to people and so forth. She's authorized the city manager to take certain steps in that resolution that she signed. So the, the mayor's powers are somewhat limited, but clearly, she's entitled to act without council approval on a number of those items that are specified in the act. And that's the whole concept of, because it's an emergency and there isn't time necessarily for councils to meet, that's the way the act is set up.
Okay. That answers my question. That answers my question.
Councilmember Greg. Yeah, I'd like to comment on that before we move on. If there are actions that are being taken like that, can we just make sure that the rest of council is being informed about it? I feel like the flow of communication has been sort of stunted. I'd like to know more about what's happening. I'd like to know more about what's happening, even if it's something that doesn't require our direct authority.
Um, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Greg. Uh, Councilmember Babcock, one second. I'm trying to think, have, what have, have I done anything as an emergency manager, George, that hasn't been um, also done by the governor?
The only thing I can think that we did in any sense that had the power of the emergency because of the providing for the safety and welfare was the $10,000 for homeless, uh, people experiencing homelessness. So I don't believe, um, the normal operation of government continues, but I don't think there's been any uh, expenditures, exprude, or anything of that nature aside from that. Um, so that was the example I gave and that's the only thing I could think of.
And I, I will commit to if I do ever use my emergency powers, I will certainly let everyone know, um, the, the city manager as the CEO of the city has made decisions, budget decisions such as not opening the pool, um, not having programs for the summer to, to keep, uh, from spreading the virus within our city. So those you would think of as emergency, but they aren't. So those are just the, the CEO making budget decisions. That would normally be discussed at council, but because we're not having council, that's how those have taken, taken place. So I'm going to go with Councilmember Babcock and then Councilmember Greg and then Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Babcock.
Actually, first I'll, I'll pass it back to Councilmember Greg if that's all right.
Yep.
Um, I, the, the specific things that you mentioned, the aquatic center, the parks and rec, I feel like we did get memos on that. So that's, you know, that's great. It just, it also seems like there's, there's one specific instance that was discussed in email, um, this, the letter of April 1st that was addressed to you specifically that didn't end up coming to the rest of council that I think was probably just an oversight. But I think, um, continuing with the council of equals feeling if there's communication that's coming to you as the mayor, it would be nice if you could kind of just CC us on that and say, hey, guys, this came to me and, you know, whatever, it's fine. It's just we're all feeling a little bit isolated and it's a really helpless situation. So any increase of communication would be appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Greg. That is my plan. Councilmember Babcock?
I'll certainly second that. Specific examples don't come to mind, but we haven't met in a long time, too long. And part of our job is to be informed of things and, and reading about them. Particularly a letter about a downtown development after the fact was disappointing. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Hey, so, um, I'll echo some of those comments, but I just wanted to give a, a quick example of, especially now that we do have meetings scheduled. Um, if decisions like that are made, um, for instance, as, uh, the chairman of the board at Capital Area Michigan Works, um, that board authorized me originally, um, to enter into a contract with the new CEO um, and then have the board retroactively approve that after the contract was signed. Um, and it was just something where even though, um, we had the ability to do what we did, we still had a retroactive approval just because that did have a high implication to obviously the, the future of that organization and the budget on that. So, um, since we do have meetings scheduled out and of course, this is all hypothetical because we don't know what's going to happen in the next 15, 16 days. Um, but if decisions are made, if we could actually even have those on a meeting agenda to be discussed, um, to, um, maybe even unfortunately be picked at by other council members or the public. Um, that's always a good thing. I, I understand the press releases and memos are good and those inform all of us, but um, having it on an agenda even retroactively after a decision has been made, um, tends to bring up discussion. So again, that's hypothetical. We don't have any instances of that right now, but, um, that is just a opinion of mine. Thanks.
Okay, so I, I, I I thought about this. I was at the DDA meeting, the Zoom meeting last week, and there is another one today. Just like when we are meeting in person, these meetings, all the subcommittee meetings are attended by a council person, but not reported out to council. We, we, that has never been our practice and everybody actually has the ability to get on and view those meetings. So, um, if we want to change that practice while we're working virtually, I'd be happy to report out what happens in the meetings that I attend. Um, we have to be careful not to violate the OMA while we do that. It will just be information, not any kind of discussion. Um, but I'm happy to do that with my committee meetings. Hang on, hang on, we're there, keep orderly. Uh, Councilmember Greg?
Um, so I also zoomed into that DDA meeting last week and actually specifically DDA has come up several times in the past where we have had multiple members of council who have wanted to attend that meeting, who have been cautioned not to attend that meeting. And so I actually found the virtual format to be an, like considerable improvement. Um, I was just listening to it on my headphones actually while I was walking around town. That is a meeting that is not generally recorded and broadcast, so I don't know um, what we can do going forward to just, um, even have a audio recording of that. I'd love to continue the virtual format. Honestly, I'm finding the virtual format to be infinitely more accessible than our in-person meetings. Um, and then also just as a note, I've actually kind of always thought that it would be nice to have a summary of all of our, like, different individual commissions. Um, I don't know who would prepare that. Um, I don't want to put an odious burden on staff and I don't really trust myself to accurately summarize those meetings. But I think our commissions are doing work that is not communicated to other commissions and is also not communicated to us. And it has led to cross-communication and like, um, loss of collaboration opportunities. I'm frequently frustrated that the DDA takes up art, um, recommendations without talking to the Arts Commission. Just things like that that should be communicated across platforms. We've got a lot of really excellent work happening in town and I think we're missing some of it because we don't have those summarized, um, things going out. So I would really like to see, I don't know how to facilitate this, so I guess this is to talk about going forward. I'd like to see summaries of every commission included in every commission's packet so that everybody has an opportunity to see what other work is being done in the city and then, you know, to council as well.
Uh, Mr. Lahanas?
Yes.
Uh, so would you just, uh, take that under advisement and bring us back some thoughts at the next meeting, please?
Yes, to discuss regarding the, uh, colo, the consolidation of, of items from boards and commissions.
Yeah, a way, a way that every board and commission knows what every other board and commission does without a huge increase in burden on the staff. Magic, I know. Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, and I apologize for cutting in in the middle there. Um, so I, and I didn't necessarily, uh, mean to imply, um, you know, a report out from specific meetings that you're having or, um, commissions even necessarily. I'm more meant, you know, when budgetary decisions, because that is a possibility, right? Um, under this, um, under these rules, so budgetary implications and, um, decisions that would normally come to a council that don't necessarily need to come to a council now, um, just retroactively be discussed. That, that's more what I meant. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are any other, any other discussions about the consent agenda or would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? See, none. I move approval of the consent agenda. Could I please have a second?
Mayor, bro, Tom Stevens, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Meadows, got in underneath there. Um, any more discussion? All of us in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
The consent.
I'm muting. I, sorry, I said it.
The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the business agenda, item four point one, to introduce and set a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 21 CDBG program budget and allocation of the CBD, CDBG CD funds for May 12, 2020 and May 26, 2020. Um, Mr. Lahanas?
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll just look to put Mr. Farinbach and Miss Amy Schussler, if, uh, his or her assistance is needed to start off.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you still hear me? I'm trying to mute my.
Yes.
Yeah, it was doubled before. Now we hear you, Tom.
Great, thank you. Uh, and good morning, everyone. Um, uh, this is an action really to set two public hearings for May 12 and May 26. Typically, this would happen on the consent agenda, uh, but, uh, we thought that given the situation we're in, uh, it makes sense to, uh, to give a brief presentation today essentially around the two buckets of money, uh, that we have through CDBG. As an entitled entitlement community, we have our traditional bucket. There's also a bucket of approximately $289,000 that's been allocated as response monies for COVID. Staff has been working towards, uh, recommendations to support our community during this crisis within the framework of the federal guidelines. And I'm going to ask that Amy Schussler Schmidt, our CDB, CDBG expert, give a brief presentation about where we are at the moment and the guidance that we're seeking from council to help us best prepare for the public hearings you're considering, uh, setting for May 12 and 26. So Amy, uh, if you're on the line, if you could, uh, have some brief remarks, please.
Sure. Um, thank you for having me. Everybody can hear me. Okay, I understand. Great. Um, so the city of East Lansing is obviously, as Tom had just mentioned, an entitlement community. Uh, as such, we are scheduled to receive $492,100 in next year fiscal funds. Um, and so what that means is essentially it is fiscal year 21 year. So it is July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. That is fiscal year 21. From a HUD perspective, of course, they don't align with us so that they're program year 20. Um, the funds must be allocated, um, to primarily benefit income eligible persons or undertake housing and public infrastructure projects that could be completed in CDBG eligible census tract areas. So there are specific areas of the city, um, for example, Bailey, the name, the Bailey neighborhood and Red Cedar neighborhood that are census eligible tract areas. And so you have seen in the past in public infrastructure projects, sidewalk project improvements there. Um, as you're also aware, uh, as Mr. Farinbach just mentioned, at the end of March, Congress approved the CARES Act, which will also provide us now with $289,484 in CDBG funds. But those must and can only be spent to prevent, prepare and respond to the coronavirus outbreak. And within your packet materials, um, I had essentially provided an FAQ sheet on what the federal government guidance is of how those funds can be spent. So there are a little more limitations to how those funds can be spent. Um, I think for our purposes, I'd like to begin with discussion of the CD funds because I think that that will then help wrap into, um, the, the fiscal year 21 discussion. So, um, at this time, when we reviewed sort of that FAQ sheet about the, the guidance of how the funds can be spent, essentially there are, there was a discussion among staff that perhaps a small business grant would be, um, helpful and applicable. Um, under the current guidelines, we're recommending that perhaps persons could apply up to $5,000 in staff salaries, leasing spaces, insurances and utility supports, um, but that number could be increased or lessened at council's discretion. Um, under the program proposal, businesses, business owners or owners with employees must meet the necessary income requirements. And so essentially the way that this program would be set up is that if it is the business owner or the business owner with employees, they, that individual would be tracked and we're trying to show that, you know, they're, they either continue to be employed or that they've hired someone that is low to moderate income. Um, the low to moderate income, uh, requirements are basically 80% American, um, I'm sorry, area median income. So I'll give you an example. For a family of four, you would count the income of anyone aged 18 years of age or older. They could make up to $59,450 a year and still be eligible to participate, um, in any CDBG program that, that city council would offer. Um, again, you know, really the intent of this program is that businesses located anywhere within the city limits would have the opportunity to, um, tap into grant opportunities. I can tell you that I have researched what some other municipalities are, are looking into. There are also, um, there is also the opportunity to provide loans, um, but that does, uh, require some underwriting. And so it is staff's impression that that might take a little more, a little more time. Um, so that is sort of the recommendation in terms of the CD funds. In terms of the other new program, that would be linked to your fiscal year 21, um, budget, there was discussion about implementing a new emergency relief housing program. Now, what I just want to point out about this program is that, um, that type of program cannot be paid for out of the CD funds. It can only be paid for out of the entitlement funds because it is considered emergency relief by HUD. So at this time, um, if you were interested in that program, it would have to be either linked to the next fiscal year or we could potentially link it to this fiscal year and we can talk about that in just a minute. Um, but the initial thought process proposal by staff is that you could, um, have persons receive up to $2,000 in emergency rent or mortgage payments. Um, they would need to prove a financial hardship. So in this case, perhaps a potential temporary job loss due to COVID-19 or other things. Um, per the HUD guidelines, um, we cannot provide more than three months rent and financial assistance. So it's, it's only three months rent. Um, you know, we felt that $2,000 might be an appropriate level. Um, but again, city council could, could choose to make that higher or lower based upon your needs. Um, we'd be interested in partnering with Capital Area Housing Partnership, who is the city's main, um, housing provider. Um, they have developed low to moderate income houses for the city. They have worked with us and partnered with us on homeowner rehab projects, on dumping assistance projects. Um, and so they would be very interested in partnering with us to manage this particular program. Um, they're also HUD certified counselors. And so the thought process was that if residents took advantage of this program, they would be able to, um, access some free counseling services and so that that might just lead, lead to some general financial independence in the future. So those are kind of the, the, the main elements. Um, I, I had mentioned, uh, just a moment ago that the one thing I, I did want to point out to city council is that the recommendations are really linked to the next fiscal year. So everything beginning July 1. If city council was interested in, um, linking it to this current fiscal year, we can, we can do that. Um, however, what will need to happen is you would need to determine what projects that we had already funded with this year's pot of money will, will be changed over. Um, and to be frank, when reviewing that kind of budget proposal right now, um, it is the CDBG sidewalk project that has not yet, um, been begun or bid. So, um, if you were to consider, you know, trying to fund some of these programs sooner than July 1, um, I think that we would, we would need to have a discussion about potentially looking at the CDBG sidewalk program that's, that's planned for the spring and taking funds from that pot of money. In terms of overall approvals, um, you know, you're looking at, if it's July 1, you're looking at about a 30-day program periods. If you approve everything by the end of May, you know, you're likely to get all of the, the funds in by July. If you try to link things to this fiscal year, HUD still reserves the right for 40-day, 45-day review period because staff would be amending our current action plan document that lays out how we spend the month, our consolidated plan document because it involves activities that were not accounted for, um, and our citizen participation plan. So, um, if you were to look at it for this current fiscal year, probably frankly, the earliest you're looking at funds going out the door are going to be the middle of June. So you're looking at about, you know, uh, you know, a one to two week difference there, but I, I did want to make you aware of that, of that difference. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, for the purposes of scheduling the public hearings per our consolidated plan process, we do need to schedule two public hearings for the fiscal year 21 budget. So, um, you know, setting aside these two new, um, uh, program proposals, we do still need to, to schedule uh, two public hearings for the fiscal year 21 budget.
Mr. Lahanas, did you have more?
No, I think that's all. Unless you have questions, Mayor, for council.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. Uh, so I have a couple of questions. Uh, Amy, thank you for that, um, explanation, especially the explanation of the timeline. That is very, very helpful. Um, so since I've been here, um, we have definitely talked, uh, a lot about that sidewalk project, um, going into the Bailey neighborhood. Are there other priority areas, um, that are income qualified in the community where we're going to see a shift in priority? Um, where some of those funds might go in the future? Um, just because I, I know that we, we do, and I'm, I'm all for fixing sidewalks in Bailey neighborhood, but, um, you know, I know that there are other areas in the community that definitely could use some assistance as well, um, from those monies. Uh, do we have kind of a, a list of priorities on, on where those monies could go in the future?
Mr. Lahanas?
Now, are, are you talking about CDBG money specifically or, or are you talking about rental support or sidewalks?
The, the sidewalks.
Because they have to be used, that CDBG money has to be used within targeted zones. So there are approvable areas in which it can be used. So if, if it's CDBG money, it can only be allocated within those specific areas.
No, and I understand that completely. What I was more asking is, are there other of those qualified areas that we're looking at priorities in the future? To be used for those may possible sidewalk funds, CDBG funds?
So are you saying you want to find different funds from the future or are you saying, I'm not exactly clear on what you're looking for?
Let me, let me break in, let me break in, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Stevens. I think what Councilmember Stevens is, is asking is, are there other neighborhoods that qualify in addition to Bailey?
Amy?
Yes, so the Red Cedar neighborhood is one of the eligible areas. I can tell you that, um, approximately four years ago, there was. I can tell you that approximately four years ago, there was a water project that was undertaken in that neighborhood. I do have a map of the CDBG eligible areas that I'd be happy to email to council. Member Stevens, in response to your question, what happens is, through the HUD requirements, every five years, we as the city are to undertake public input on how the CDBG funds are to be spent. So I had mentioned before that we're in fiscal, we're about to begin fiscal year 21, but that is program year 20 for HUD. Our current consolidated plan is for fiscal, is for, I'm sorry, program year 15 through 20. So what that means is by the end of basically next spring, we're going to start a whole new five-year planning process. That will include the public. It would have a minimum of two public meetings, a minimum of two hearings before City Council. So I think this is an appropriate time to be discussing this. All of the projects that we have funded thus far have aligned with our consolidated plan that was approved, you know, when the 2015 to 2020 consolidated plan was submitted to HUD.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you, Amy. And I had one more comment, Mayor, if that's okay. So we had had, I think every council member at this point has had somebody reach out to them and say, how can I help those in need? I might not need my stipend check. I might not need, you know, another, I can donate a little bit of money, whether it's that full 1,200 or some people just want to donate, you know, $50. I think we've all discussed as a council, what means we can maybe utilize that through. This is obviously something fairly separate from the CDBG funds. And it's something that I think we can discuss as a council in the future. But this kind of emergency relief fund or a housing affordability fund that I know we've talked about in the past, I think that this crisis definitely shows the need for something like that in the future, just to have on regular hand. So I do want to continue exploring the possibility of working with community foundations, Capital Area Housing Partnership, to have something like this in place in the future, whether or not we are going through a pandemic. So.
Councilmember Stevens. So right now, what we're doing is, we're just saying this public hearing. But I will take that as direction, I think, from council to Mr. Lahanas to think about a way that we can have a way to help our neighbors in need. Maybe bringing it up at the next discussion only meeting, something to put on staff's agenda to think about how, how we might do that. Are there any other questions for Mr. Lahanas or Mrs. Schuster Schmidt? Okay, all those in favor of setting the public here, oh, sorry. I will, I will make a motion to introduce and set a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 21 CDBG program budget and allocation of CDBG CV funds for May 12, 2020 and May 26, 2020. Can I have a second?
Mayor Protem. Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Stevens. Mr. Mills, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is 4.2, consideration of a resolution to amend the budget of the city of East Lansing to reduce business license and entertainment fees. Mr. Lahanas?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So this is an important item for us. You know, this, the impetus for this came up pretty much directly after the mayor state, I mean, the governor stay home order. When it occurred to us that, to me, that we actually send out our billing for business licenses pretty soon in April and May. And as the businesses downtown or throughout the city were experiencing obviously tremendous hardship, I wanted to think about something where they did not get a bill from the city while they were closed, not operating, that would, you know, obviously put them into further distress. So what we came up with was a recommendation to council of, you know, in one view, it's a view of equity, a two, up to $2,000 discount for every business. We did not go the percentage route. The idea was that to try to eliminate the bill for many, or if not most, of the businesses completely, so they did not get a bill. They still would have to file their business license application in order to get the, the reduction. But it merely is another way of trying to get equity where we're having a discount for all of the businesses, where many of them would not have to pay any fee at all for the year. If you look at the fee, this fee is also not just related to the cost of processing the business license in regards to entertainment and establishments that are restaurants, it's based on occupancy. And the reason it's based on occupancy is because we spend a lot of time in allocation of public safety resources to the enforcement of alcohol issues in the downtown. The larger an establishment, the greater the intensity of resources that we have to devote to that establishment. One example, a concrete example of a cost that we have related to alcohol enforcement is our actual alcohol enforcement officer. We have an officer who spends 50 to 60% of their time. They're a specialist in alcohol enforcement. And, you know, you could imagine that that's easily $35,000 or $40,000 of direct cost that we do in terms of enforcing in the downtown, not related necessarily to the issuance of the license. So I think when you look at those licenses and base them on occupancy, that's the logic, is that our experience has pretty clearly been the larger an operation is, the more the intensity of the resources that we devote to it. But the idea of this was, was a shot at trying to make certain that most of our businesses don't get a bill at all. And if they do get a bill, it's been reduced by a significant amount. But this is a recommendation. We are proposing it to council, obviously for your discussion and direction. If Mr. Farinbach wants to, or Mr. Schuster wants to weigh in and add anything to that, I would appreciate it. Did you want to, did you want to take a question now, Councilmember Meadows? Or should I continue to see if there's anything else from staff?
Let's, let's let staff finish and then we'll ask for questions. Anybody else on staff?
Miss Schuster, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Good morning. This is City Clerk Jennifer Schuster. The proposed resolution would amend this year's budget to reduce by $2,000 each business that pays a business license fee to the city of East Lansing pursuant to the sections indicated in the resolution. There are 124 businesses up for renewal that would benefit from this one-time reduction. This would reduce anticipated revenue by about $48,000, but will still generate about $40,000 for this fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schuster. Councilmember Meadows?
A couple of questions, really. In, in terms of the total value of the business licenses that are proposed to be reduced by 2000, the total revenue that we get on an annual basis for that is how much?
Almost 90,000.
Okay. And with regard to the entertainment licenses that are on the second page of the resolution, what's the annual revenue that we get from that?
Um, I don't have that total in front of me. But our restaurant licenses are the highest amount of revenue and then entertainment would be.
And if I could interject, Mr. Meadows, so the proposal is a 2,000, up to a $2,000 reduction combined. So if somebody has a $1,500 fee for a restaurant and a $400 fee for entertainment, they would get a $1,900 reduction. And it's not refundable. So if, if combined companies or organizations fee is only $500, they'd only get $500. They would not get 1,500, you know, in addition. All you could do is get to zero. You can't get the whole zero. Have any more questions, Councilmember Meadows? Yes?
I don't have a question, but I have a motion when we're done with this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gregg?
I wondered, so that $40,000 that's left over, so if I'm reading this correctly, the revenue loss due to this 2,000 that's across the board is about 48, and then there would be 40,000 left over. So, and this is speaking to the point that the Riley's brought up in their phone-in comments. How many businesses then are bearing the burden of that $40,000 of revenue? So how many businesses are at zero? And then how many businesses are left that are paying that 40,000?
I can speak to the restaurant licenses. So all four of those would see a complete reduction down to zero.
So four businesses are left with their entire 40,000 budget. So just from my perspective as a small business owner, and I only have experience with my own business, so this is not, and my business is not alcohol or entertainment based. So personally, I have a very low overhead because I have a very low, small business, right? So businesses to me, and I'm sure I'm going to offend some small business owners by saying this, the small businesses are not quite as at risk, in my opinion, as the medium-sized businesses because our overhead and our costs are just not that high. I only have three staff members and right now they're all furloughed. I'm the only person working in the store and legally I cannot pay myself. So my overhead is almost nothing. Now, obviously in a bar or a service industry, that's not going to be the same. But when you have a medium-sized business, that's not like a national chain, but it's still a very large local business, they have exponentially higher overhead. They have a lot more staff. They have a lot more building and maintenance costs. And so to take, you know, a promotion, I guess, I don't know what we're calling this, a reduction, eliminate it for the small people who might be more able to bear it. And like, obviously, I'm only speaking in my own experience of my own business. And then to put that entire burden on to what, in my perspective, is actually the most vulnerable segment of our business community, the people that have the highest overhead, especially in service industries where there are limited occupancy, like they're going to have, in order to open up as a restaurant and alcohol service, they're going to have more changes in their service than somebody else because of all of the new health code things that they're going to have to follow. So to me, that just doesn't seem right. I would rather see if we need that $40,000 of revenue, I'd rather seen it spread equally across the downtown business community. If we can do without the $40,000 of revenue, I'd rather just see a complete elimination of the fees.
Thank you. Councilmember Meadows?
Okay, well, actually, my motion is very similar to that. So I'm going to make the motion at this point in time, just see if we get a second, I'm happy to talk about it. If I don't, I don't. But I'd like to move to actually zero out the business license fees for this year in, using the language that we have in, in the paragraph on the first page of the resolution. And then I'm going to move to zero out the entertainment license fees at all as well. I do have a question with regard to those types of motions because I want to know whether we, I, I would propose that to the extent that we need revenue with regard to this amount of money, which sounds like it maybe is 120,000 or 130,000, that we move 130,000 from the rainy day fund into the budget to take care of this. But this gives a definite benefit to the small businesses that we have, the larger businesses that we have. And if you think about the entertainment license, which I think also is assessed based on the number of seats you have on the sidewalk out in front of the, the business, you know, we're going to also impact not a lot, but a little bit for, with businesses like Campbell's Market, which wouldn't ordinarily be benefited by any of the things that we've talked about so far. So I think that we can benefit more businesses within the community by just zeroing this out for 12 months. And then we can take a look at this entire structure during that time period, as is proposed by the Riley's, and see whether we want to approach this in a different direction as we go forward. So the first motion is to, in that first, in that paragraph on the first page of the resolution, to eliminate the language quote for up to a maximum of $2,000 and substitute to zero, T-O-Z-E-R-O, for that language. And what that basically says is that we're going to zero it out from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Is there a second? Is there a second? For purposes of discussion, I will second, Councilmember Meadows, it's been moved and seconded. Do you have more to say about your motion?
I do not.
Councilmember Gregg?
Well, so really, it's just a question of that $40,000 that's left over. So I guess from staff, what was the thought in keeping, what was the thought in not going to zero initially? And I, I, we are going to be hemorrhaging money out of every single section of our budget for the next, I would say, at least 18 months. I don't think anything approaching normal is going to happen within this calendar year. And I think we're going to see effects going into the next calendar year. So in terms of like, well, do we, do we have the money for that? I mean, the permanent answer is going to be no, like we have no money for anything. So, but also, so that $40,000, do we need it? Can we do without it? If we, if we can do without it, I say zero. If we need it, I'd like to see it distributed evenly percentage-wise. So I guess, yeah, speaking to the staff, what is that 40,000 thought?
So the logic was that some businesses would receive a 500, their business license is $200 or $300. So we're trying to wipe out, the logic was to try to wipe out most people's business license, $300 or $400 business license. If you get to a larger establishments like a Dublin, like a Harper's, like, you know, the three or four, the Reno's, the Wings, Buffalo Wild Wings, those places are so large, they pay in the thousands of dollars. So we thought it was disproportionate to give a $300 discount to some business while giving a $10,000 discount to another business, that it would fall disproportionately heavy in terms of, if you just didn't across-the-board wiping out of the license, it falls disproportionately heavy in terms of a huge incentive or a huge benefit for some, where it's only a $300 discount for a, a smaller operator. That's the logic. Like I said, it was just another shot at equity. It's another perspective on equity, you know, trying to give everyone the same across-the-board dollar reduction. But again, it's a decision for council. In terms of the $40,000, there is nothing magical about $40,000. We're giving up $50,000 of revenue. The total amount is about $88,000 in license fees we would be foregoing. So we would be getting a little, we would be keeping a little less than half if we, if we went along with the recommendation. That's all.
Okay. Um, I, I do understand that. I just think equitability-wise, you know, those, the businesses that are paying tens of thousands of dollars in licensing fees, they're paying tens of thousands of dollars because they're ordinarily more able to afford it, right? So like, but they're disproportionately less able to afford it now because they, the impact is just so much greater on a larger business. So if we, I, I support the idea of zero, if we can do without it. I'd, I'd really rather see across-the-board zero out of all licenses.
Babcock? I'm sorry. Were you finished, Councilmember Gregg? Yes. Councilmember Babcock and then Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you. One of my concerns is that some businesses frankly cost more to have in the community. And I think, I don't know, I wasn't here, but I think that may be one of the reasons. Could the city manager address that, please?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly the reason is that it's seen as the, the law enforcement resources that you have to dedicate to a larger operation that has three or 400 people going out onto the street or 500 people going out onto the street at 2:00 AM is significantly different than a restaurant that has 50 people going, that, you know, may have people trickle out onto the street at 11 o'clock at night for, from dinner is completely different than a restaurant that empties out at 2:00 AM with hundreds of patrons. The law enforcement needs are considerably different. So that's, I was not the manager when they implemented the, the capacity differentials between those licenses, but that's the logic that was explained. I certainly see that's the case, that these, these larger establishments draw more resources. So you're exactly right, Councilmember.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. The one thing that I, that I do want to point out is I want us to try and stray away from language, like if we can take the hit, just because, I mean, if we look through that budget document, you know, almost every department says something similar along the lines of, we don't know how this pandemic is going to affect X revenues or X fees or a result of blank. And so, you know, while we have maintained what is the council policy, fund balance, and obviously this year we're going to be above that just due to the six months of that income tax. I, I do want to mention that we don't know what the result of this is going to be and what the net impact of this is going to be on the budget. And so, you know, we're straying into a little bit of deep ocean here. And I, I don't think that this is a, a bad way to go in. But, you know, in a normal budget cycle, allocating another $40,000 towards this might not be a big deal. But we don't know what the result is going to be by this. So I just want to point that out, that we don't have data on this to, to tell us that it's. Um, that we don't have data on this to, to tell us that it's, you know, it's gonna be okay or it's not gonna be okay. So I don't want to hold staff to telling us, yes, we can take the hit if, eventually we, we might not be able to.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. So, uh, hang on a second, Councilmember Meadows. Um, so I'm going to support this amendment. And I want people to think about the whole idea here. The whole idea I, in my mind, is to keep businesses from closing. So when this is over, we have the businesses. I don't know if Harper's and Dublin and, um, Reno's are at risk of closing or not, and I don't know if the small ones are at risk of closing or not. It makes sense that for the period of March, whenever fifteenth to April fifteenth, they were, they did not operate. From April fifteenth to May fifteenth, they probably won't operate from May fifteenth to June fifteenth, or maybe July, they won't. So if we did not do this, we're asking a business to pay a license for something they're not allowed to do. Which seems just patently unfair. Um, assuming they will be able to open eventually. Maybe we don't need to do a hundred percent abatement, but I think if we go the percentage route, what we'll end up doing is giving a lot of money to four or five businesses and very little money to the other businesses. So I think that they, even though we certainly can't afford it, I think because to me, keeping businesses in town in, in business, um, is my goal. So I will be supporting this amendment. Councilmember Meadows and then Councilmember Stevens.
I'll pass, Mayor.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes, I, I will be supporting this as well for the same reasons that you had outlined. I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, when talking about the budget implications, just that, you know, we, there are a lot of unknowns right now. Um, the, I had one question for the city attorney, um, just because it was mentioned in the RHC letter. Um, they had mentioned establishing a temporary moratorium on landlords evicting commercial tenants. I know that obviously a moratorium on evictions had been in place for residential. Does that apply to commercial as well?
It does not.
Okay.
It's also not part of this, uh, resolution and I don't believe we could amend this resolution to do that.
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to amend it just because it was mentioned in the letter. I, I want to see if we might be able to explore that idea. Um, as well as the possibility of some parking in the future at another meeting.
Uh, Council, uh, Mr. Yaden?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just not sure that the, uh, motion that, uh, Councilmember Meadows made does what he, he wants it to do. Uh, I think we need to address that language in that second, uh, yet further resolved clause. Is the, is the idea to remove all business and entertainment license fees?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we need to address the language in the. Oh, okay.
Um, would it be simpler, Tom, just to substitute for the entire, uh, resolution to say a new resolution to eliminate business license fees and entertainment fees, uh, for two thousand, for the next fiscal year? Would that be simpler?
Um, I, I, I worry about the language the next fiscal year just because the way this is, uh, but, but, yeah, I mean, if you just want to add, um, to, to the mayor's or to former mayor, uh, Councilmember Meadows', uh, our motion, the, uh, the business and entertainment licenses to go to zero and then we can just delete that second, uh, yet further resolved clause.
I would like to make that as a friendly amendment.
I accept that.
Okay, any more discussion? So we're mo- voting on the amendment to four point two, um, as described by Mr. Yaden. Uh, Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Yes. So the amendment is approved and now we're on the main motion, four point two. Consideration of a resolution to amend the budget of the city of East Lansing to effectively eliminate business license and entertainment fees as described by, um, the city attorney. Is that good enough, Mr. Yaden? Okay, could I have a second, please? Oh, I already have a second. You're already, we're already there. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Mills, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Babcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the liquor license renewal. Um, I had some interest in, in this, in this item. So I'm going to, uh, this, and this, before we actually have a motion on this item, I'd just like to discuss, uh, the whole, the whole idea. When, uh, when that, when the pandemic hit in March, um, I was very concerned about the hundreds and thousands of students that we had putting themselves and other people at risk in bars, in parties. Everywhere in East Lansing. And I called on all of you, uh, on a particular day, I think it was a Saturday, before the governor had even indicated that she might close businesses or, or bars. Because, I mean, to put it slangily, I was freaking out that we were going to become a, a hub of the virus. And that students would leave and spread the virus all over the state. And I didn't want to be the, the mayor that let that happen. So I called on all council people. I talked to Mr. Yaden, I talked to Mr. Lahanas, and everybody went to work trying to get the Ingham County Health Department to allow all of Ingham County to close bars and close businesses where there were a lot of people close together. Uh, we were ultimately not successful. We worked, everybody was working very hard. We, I got calls from the Health Department saying, stop your people from calling me. Um, the governor's office, uh, attorneys worked with Mr. Yaden to see that what we could do. But ultimately, uh, we did not have that power. And fortunately, within two days, I think it was, the governor did that for us. So what I would like to do, the reason I put this here, I, I, I agreed to have this here is, Mr. Yaden, I want you to start thinking about how we can amend our charter. So that when this happens again, we can act as a council taking care of its people and not have to wait for the county or the state. And I know other cities have, uh, more power in their ordinance for council to take action to protect their citizens and not wait for greater uh, higher entities. So that's the reason I wanted this on here. I don't really, really want to take any action on it today. This is just where, uh, the issue came up to me was in the establishments that had liquor licenses. We had no power. All we could do was ask, um, to, to have them not open. And we didn't really have any power to do anything. So that's why I have it on there. Would anybody else like to talk about this issue? Councilmember Babcock, Councilmember Meadows, after Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you. Um, we all remember that day. It seems that we all remember it a little differently as you talk to people. Um, however, one of the things I've discovered is that some cities in Michigan do exercise regulatory power in addition to the Liquor Control Commission of the state level. Um, Plymouth, Novi, Grand Rapids, Lowell, um, they have city boards and commissions that review liquor control applications from within the city and also, um, have a mechanism to address citizen concerns about the liquor license holders. I'll defer in part to Councilmember Meadows, who I didn't get the opportunity to speak with, but I would like the city to consider creating a board or commission to deal with the liquor license holders in in the city of East Lansing and deal with seems a little harsh, but, but to address concerns as they arise. Thank you.
Thank you. What, anybody else, Mr. Meadows?
Uh, just, uh, actually, a little bit further than what we've been talking about here. You know, we are a city with a history of, um, sports related riots, uh, within our community. And one of the things that we've been confronted with in the past is our inability to say, close down bars and restaurants in the downtown area when we see this issue, uh, developing. And so to the extent that you're gonna get advice with regard to a charter change or a, or an ordinance change that would permit you to have a little more authority, uh, you are able to suppress riots. So that, that's already there. Um, I, I'd like to see that discussion as well as to whether we can broaden it just a little bit for public disturbances as well.
Yes, I, I think that's, that's wonderful. Um, Councilmember Babcock?
Thank you. And one of the reasons, I'm sorry, adding on, one of the reasons I would like to see the city have a board or commission is that it often falls in the public mind to the responsible hospitality council, but they have, they, they are not a city board, although Councilmember Meadows, um, does sit on their board. They are not, um, they're, they're not part of city government and they're not necessarily responsive to us. So I think it may be wise that the city create a board, uh, that allows us to express our concerns on a regular basis and have our community members regularly involved. Thank you.
So I think what we're having here to, are two recommendations, one for Mr. Lahanas. Would you look into how we might structure and propose a brand new commission? The Commission on Alcohol. Um, I think that would, that would encompass businesses that, that serve alcohol. It would encompass parties and, you know, things like that, something like that. Would you take a look at that and bring it back to a discussion meeting? And Mr. Yaden, if you would look at the ordinance, what we need to be able to react, uh, more quickly to things that are related to alcohol, um, and, and, and close gatherings in the city. Um, Councilmember Greg, did you, yes?
Um, I have some reservations about this. We already have a lot of, um, barriers to people doing business in East Lansing. We don't think about it that way, but when you talk to the business community, just the way that we use special use licenses, the high fees, there's a lot of things that are keeping, um, new businesses out of East Lansing. And I'm a little bit leery about adding one more potential stumbling block to that system. So I would be really curious to see, um, the commissions that are in existence statewide that, um, Councilmember Babcock has referenced. I would like to see what types of problems they're addressing and how those commissions are being used and how they're functioning in the communities that they're already existing in before we adopt something in East Lansing.
And, and I just asked, uh, Mr. Lahanas to propose something. Of course, this would be something that we would discuss. We might not do it at all. Um, for, wh- when I was thinking about it, it was more of a, uh, responsible hospitality commission that included everybody. For example, so that people could come to the committee meetings and say, we think you should do that. And then, you know, they can recommend things to city council, just like a regular, right? Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, um, and I, I know that, uh, the city manager is probably already thinking this, but, um, you know, we do also have a celebrations committee. Um, that's kind of a joint committee that deals specifically the issue that, uh, Councilmember Meadows was speaking on, um, and working with both, um, some rental companies um, and, uh, police departments, MSU folks and others. Um, and so, you know, I, I do think, I do think the pieces are there for what is being discussed. Maybe the, the resources haven't been connected, um, but I, but I do, um, share some concerns as well uh, that Councilmember Greg had brought up. Um, and I, I maybe think that, um, a connection of resources is, is more needed, but I'm, I'm open to hear, um, what the city manager proposes and I'm, I'm happy to have that discussion at a discussion only meeting, so.
Okay, any other discussion about this item? Okay, we don't need to take any, uh, action on this item. Do I need to do something to not take action, Mr. Yaden?
No, you're, you're fine by just not closing up.
Okay, so it's ten forty-five. We are going to take a five minute break. Uh, I'm gonna turn off my video and audio for this time, but I'm not going anywhere and we will be back at ten fifty-five. Thank you.
Nicole, can you hear me?
George, this is Nicole.
Yep, you hear me okay?
Yes, I do. Thanks.
Great, thanks.
Jill, are you on? Did you want to test your audio?
I am on. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, that sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, whenever you're ready to begin again, just let me know and I'll stop sharing the slate.
Okay, it's 10:55. I am ready. All right, welcome back. It is now 10:55 and we will move on to item number, sorry, goodbye, Jim, here. 4.4, consideration of the fiscal year 2021 budget overview, general fund and income tax fund. Mr. Lahanas.
Okay, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great, thank you. So we are here virtually to present our fiscal year 21 budget to council. Obviously, when we started this process in December and we looked at it even up to two months ago, I think I would have characterized it differently and said that we were pleased, very pleased to present our fiscal year 21 budget. Obviously, since then, the world has changed for us, COVID-19, the stay home order from six weeks ago, and our situation has become a lot more uncertain. For the past 15 years, it's no secret that the city has navigated some very difficult financial periods. Probably over the last one to two years, the things that we've put in place, the support from our residents has started to help us turn the corner financially, which we certainly appreciated that direction. At this point, the COVID-19 crisis has created a level of uncertainty that you're going to see throughout our budget process. If I were to talk about this year, coming year at this point, and it was already mentioned by council, a lot of uncertainty, it's going to hurt our fund balance, all of those things. I would say that this is kind of a wait and see period. It's a wait and see period as we see what develops in the financial picture for the city. How soon do students come back? Hopefully in the fall, how soon can the economy reopen? What does it do for our revenue or to our revenue over the coming months as we look at the impact on the state, the impact locally? So obviously a period of great uncertainty. And I think the situation of wait and see is a good perspective because it not only says what the environment out there is going to look like, we have to wait and see what that looks like. But we also should wait and see in terms of our own expenditures and our own cautious approach to government. You know, we're pretty used to the fact that as positions come available or open, we look at them hard to see if we need to continue them. As there's expenses we want to look at in the near future for capital expenditures, if there's a timeframe where we can wait on those, if there's a timeframe for other expenditures that we can wait on, we certainly want to take a wait and see approach unless things are important because we want to make sure of the financial situation and the picture before we leap into anything. So I think at this point, I would say that we're cautious in what it means for us. So with that, I would turn it over to Jill for an overview of the general fund. Obviously, we started with our process, the first several months putting this together. Now the switch is over to council's process to present to you and to hear your direction and to hear your questions for the next number of meetings until we get to an approved budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jill. Mayor, I don't know if you, if we discussed whether you want to take questions during, I think we've said we would take questions during each section. So at the end of each natural sort of stopping point, Jill will call for questions and then we can bring questions for that section and then keep going and then have more questions at the next section. If that's the way you want to proceed, that's good by us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Felpasch to begin.
Thank you, George. So like George said, I thought I was going to be standing in front of you, not talking through a screen and telling you all the wonderful things we were going to do this year as we kind of moved past the hurdles that we were facing. But instead, I'm sitting here and I think Nicole is going to share her screen. If that's not already.
She is.
Okay. And to do the slideshow. So, first thing. Okay, so going next to the next slide, Nicole, I just want to take one step back and talk about what what our budget process is. So we spend a lot of time and it starts in December. It's a quite lengthy process. We start in December, we are doing position budgeting. We are working with the departments to figure out what their plans are. And we start putting together the forecast. So we present the forecast to you in February each year. And that kind of gives us an idea of where we're heading. And then throughout the month of February, departments are working on their budget submissions. They are then submitted to finance for review for the month of March. And then we pull together the document that was presented to council early April. So that document is nearly 300 pages long. There's a lot of information in there. And I'll walk through kind of the layout on the next slide, but first I kind of want to talk about where we're at. As George mentioned, it's a wait and see. We really are working on, sorry Nicole, you can go back. We're still waiting on what is the state of Michigan going to do. So the budget in front of you does not include any COVID-19 impact in it. We talked about this in March. We were almost done with balancing every fund. And we talked about, do we try to put in here some changes? Do we try to, you know, allocate lower revenue? Do we change our expenditures? But it was really hard to figure out what the impact was going to be. It's still hard to figure out what the impact is going to be. Some of the big considerations that we don't know the answers to yet are what's the duration of the stay home, stay safe order? As we start to reopen, you know, things are going to gradually come through. But when will we as a city open? When will our programs open? There's been some decisions made, some stuff is still being considered. We need to follow what the state is doing. So the state has had a lot of webinars, Zoom conferences that I've been attending, trying to hear like where they're heading, what their thoughts are. They have referenced a University of Michigan economic forecast update. So I've kind of been using that and you'll hear me reference that throughout the presentation. We also have to consider what will MSU do? Will students come back? What will local businesses do? All of this impacts the city. And all of it needs to be considered before we know what the financial impact is. It will take us some time to determine what our new normal looks like. You know, how that affects the services that we deliver and ultimately what that means to both our revenues and our expenditures. So although I gave you a budget book that looks pretty nice, I guess my recommendation to council is we approve the budget with any modifications that we come up with over the next few meetings. Because we have to have a budget approved no later than the last regular meeting in May. So by state law, we only have to have it in place prior to July 1, but by charter, we have to have it done by the last regular meeting in May. So what we would do, approve the budget and then we would come back to you when we have a clear sense of what the impact is and ask you to do a budget amendment. Until then, we all are under the assumption and direction that we will not be doing discretionary spending and we will not be moving forward with capital projects that rely on some of these sources of revenue. Okay, Nicole, you can go to the next slide. So the brief overview, the brief lookout of the document, there's basically three sections. There's the executive summary, which highlights the message from the city manager. There are some acknowledgements in there and I'll take the moment now to say this publicly, but I want to, you know, this is really a team effort. Like I said, all the departments take part in this, city manager, city council, you give direction throughout the month. And it really is a team effort. So I need to say a big thank you to all those parties that are involved. I also wanted to have a special thanks to Audrey Kincaid. She is our budget and accounting administrator. And she does all the position budgeting, works with all the departments. She reviews budget submissions alongside of me and she does the document preparation. So she spends an extraordinary amount of time over the four months and she deserves a special. And then I also want to acknowledge Justin Geiger. He has been working with us to figure out what we need to include in our budget document to be able to hopefully achieve the GFOA budget award. We have been talking about doing this for many years, something that it was talked about when I first started here, but we have never tried for it. So we're going to try for it this year. So our fiscal year 21 budget will be submitted to the GFOA. We will see what kind of feedback we get and any changes that we need to make. He also was responsible to compile the fee schedule. And then lastly, just really the whole finance.
Jill? Sorry to interrupt, but could you hit upon that point because council member Meadows noted the inclusion of the strategic priorities or the priority based budgeting information. I just wanted to say that that's a part of that process, correct? For the excellence in budgeting is the inclusion of that information alignment with the budget, correct?
Yeah, so we did include stuff about priority based budgeting. Also, we included some financial policies. There was a lot of additions to the budget this year and a lot of it was to achieve those criteria for that award.
Thank you.
Yep. And then I was just going to say too, I just want to say thank you to the rest of the finance team because Audrey and I spend a lot of time on the budget over a four month period. Really, they continue to run things smoothly without hiccups. And they deserve some kudos as well. Also, in the executive summary is the budget process overview, which I really just walked you through. And a timetable, which is no longer applicable because that was pre-COVID. There's also some tables and graphs that are useful. It's citywide. It kind of gives you the broad picture of what's happening in the city. And then also a personnel summary. So the personnel summary touches on head counts for part time and full time people. It's not FTEs. It's a head count. And then we talk about hours for contingent employees. And then there's the budget in brief. The budget in brief is an area where I spend a little bit of time talking about COVID-19, the unknown, the impacts. And then also highlighting the general fund and any other fund that had some significant changes in the year. So if you're going to read anything in this document, I guess my recommendation would be about that section. As I mentioned, new this year is the priority based budgeting and financial policies. And then it jumps into the financial section. So this is really the meat and potatoes of the document. This is the budget recommendation. So all funds are represented here, the general fund. Then it goes into the special revenue funds, debt service and capital improvement funds. Then to the enterprise funds, which are business type activities, meaning parking, water and sewer.
Jill, 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 I'm sorry. Could you move a little bit closer to your mic? I know you're having to look at the paper at the same time.
Yep.
Oh, that's way better. Thank you.
Okay, yep. So internal service funds is garage, computers and the insurance fund. And then the component units are our authorities, the DDA, the DMV, the LDFA and the brownfield. Then the last section is the appendix. So the last few years, we've been providing council with the five year comparative fee schedule. So this is all the fees, most of the fees assessed by the city. This is something that is part of what council approves on the resolution, which is scheduled for May 26. And I'd like to just highlight that the red font shows anything that's increasing and the blue font shows anything that's decreasing or no longer applicable. So this is an area, again, I would direct your attention to. A lot of departments talk about this in their narrative. Also, as we have the next few presentations, they will also highlight any rate fee increases or changes. And then again, we have two new things in here. And again, this is for the budget award requirements. We've inserted the excerpt from the capital improvement plan, which Tom Farinbach will be talking about after the budget presentation. And then also new is the debt service. I think this is helpful information. It kind of lays out all the debt, who's paying it and the source of revenue, the timing, the maturity dates and kind of a three year look at what the annual payment is. We also highlight the legal debt margin for the city. Moving on to the next slide. Throughout the document, you're going to see three columns on most tables. There's the fiscal year 2019 actual amounts, the fiscal year 2020 amended budget amount and the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget amount. We do a year end estimate for fiscal year 2020. We don't include a column for that, but it is represented in the front balance statement. You may also read in the narrative some discussion about the year end estimate. But it's not highlighted in a column. Some other things to note, we still have very little experience with the income tax. You know, we're one year in, normally tax returns would have been due today. The filing deadline has been extended to July 31. If our estimates are too high, the funds that are impacted are the general fund, the streets fund and the parks capital improvement fund. Moving over to OEPAD, which is other post employment benefits. This is an area that the city was contributing supplemental payments pre-2016. And we haven't been doing contributions to that until most recently, when we are required under Public Act 202. For anybody who was hired after June 30, 2018, we are required to fund the normal cost of that promised healthcare. This would only apply to police and fire here at the city. So for 2019 and in 2020, we did contribute $100,000 into the healthcare trust fund. And that is also proposed for fiscal year 21. Moving over to MERS. We are seeing a large increase to the MERS required contributions. As you may remember, MERS changed some of the requirements. We are now required to be fully funded. I keep forgetting the year, but I feel like it's 2040. So we kind of have an accelerated funding requirement. In addition, we have more retirees entering the plan. In addition, we have more retirees entering the plan. So overall, our retiree count is up. And then we have one division that's triggering a three-times requirement, which is due to low funding level. So not only do we have those changes, we have more changes coming. The assumed rate of return is changing from 7.75% to 7.35%. And that's coming on the 12/31/19 valuation. We will get that in June of 2020 and we will use that for the 2022 budget. In addition, we have been talking to MERS and they have kind of laid out the concept of changing mortality tables. So that would be effective in the 12/31/2020 valuation. So we have some time, I guess, to account for that. But again, it's going to hurt and accelerate our funding contributions. Another note is that the garage fund houses the proceeds from the sale of the Merritt Road property. So that million dollars that we received, or approximately a million dollars, is sitting in the garage fund and that is not included in the budget document as being proposed to be used for anything. So that will be a discussion at a later date. And then obviously, just to note now more than ever, the city really needs to continue to be fiscally responsible as we focus on our long-term financial sustainability. More granular, the consolidated budget for the city as a whole is $135.8 million. When we back out the interfunds, whether it's transfers or internal service charges, our net expenditures going out the door is really $108.7 million. This is down about $13 million from fiscal year 20 and that's primarily due to the sewer fund. So as you recall, the sewer fund has very large SRF projects going on out at the wharf. And so as that goes up and down, we really see some fluctuations in the overall budget. There is a 3% cost of living adjustment in place for fiscal year 21. That's all union contracts included that. And they are all in place at least through June 30 of 2021. There are some that are in place through June 30 of 2022. We also have accounted for 5% step increases for any employee who's not at the top of their scale. And then that MERS increase is 18.1%. So citywide, we saw an 18.1% increase in our MERS contributions. The supplemental pension contribution, so this is a positive. In the budget, we have 4.9 million proposed to be supplemental pension payments with 2.5 million coming from the general fund and 2.4 million coming from the income tax fund. Comparatively, fiscal year 20, we expect to send nearly $5.6 million to MERS as supplemental payments. 3.1 million has already been sent as of December and that all came from the general fund. And then 2.5 million is expected to come from the income tax fund. Our intention is, we have sent 600,000 to MERS out of the income tax fund and we intend on sending the remaining sometime in May. And then one other highlight is the income tax funded supplemental payments are targeting those divisions with the lowest funding ratios. In comparison, the general fund contribution has generally gone to the police and fire divisions as they are the largest amounts. Quickly, general government and direct cost allocation. This is something that we used to do every two to three years. It was planned to occur in fiscal year 21. We will remove that from the budget and we will likely just apply some kind of inflation factor in the future. But for the 21 budget, we left it flat with fiscal year 2020. I had mentioned the personnel summary and the overall layout. If you look at that, I'm not going to go through all the details, but overall, we have a net increase of eight full-time or part-time positions and a reduction of 933 contingent hours. Okay, property tax mileage rates. So this is a graph that I've done every year, but really this is telling us that the proposed tax rates for fiscal year 2021 are exactly the same as fiscal year 2020. Our city assessor has done a preliminary calculation. We do not expect a heavily rollback this year. If we do get a heavily rollback, it would only affect the library mileage shown in this chart. It would also affect the DDA mileage. The DDA does levy 1.7007 mils to their applicable properties. And then one other thing to note is the maximum. So the general operating max is 13 mils with an income tax in place. We're at 12.5362. And the solid waste maximum levy is 2.6301 and we levy 1.825. Okay, with that being said, I'm going to jump into general fund revenues. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. So I'll put some of my other questions in staffing and writing, but you went over budget in brief and I wanted to ask one question about a note that you made specifically on the second bullet point. You said the state normally revises and publishes revenue sharing projections after the May revenue consensus is completed. Are you still getting indications that that timeline is when you're going to see those projections and when you're going to see that potential impact? Or is that possibly going to be delayed as well?
When I've been listening to the webinars, they are still talking about the May revenue consensus. So I think that's what they utilize to do their budget and they are still on target or hoping to have their budget in by July 1st.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Okay, that looks like all the questions.
Okay, so we will jump into the general fund revenue. So this was a graph that I, again, would have been excited to share. So as you can see, over the last 10 years, we have seen an increase in general fund revenues. The one thing I will point out here though, is it does show that we have diversified our revenue sources. So with property taxes being the main source of revenue, still is, but you can see that it's been diversified with our intergovernmental and then of course, the income tax and the franchise fees. So a positive here, really this is what's allowed us to make supplemental pension payments. So digging in a little deeper on the next slide is, I'm going to go through the top revenue sources. Property taxes comes in at 13.9 million. That's an increase of 764,000 or 5.8%. This comes for many reasons. We have a CPI factor of 1.9%. We also have growth from developments and on cappings. This is an area that our revenue should not be impacted for fiscal year 21. It will likely be impacted in the future. Generally speaking, property taxes are on like a two-year delay of the effects of the economy. The other thing that I have some concerns about is the delinquency rate may increase. So those that may not be able to pay their tax bills may increase the amount of people that go into forfeiture and foreclosure at the county level. And then also for our perspective, the personal property tax collection efforts. The intergovernmental revenue is just over $10 million. And of that, 6 million of it comes from revenue sharing. So, you know, revenue sharing, I thought I was being very conservative in putting a 1.3% increase in because the state was throwing out, you know, 2.5 and those types of numbers. So obviously, I'm not conservative enough given the pandemic that we're in. But this is going to be one of those areas that is significantly impacted. We have constitutional revenue sharing and we have what used to be called statutory revenue sharing, it's now called CBTRS. The constitutional piece is a formula. It's based on the actual sales tax collected by the state of Michigan. I'm confident that that is being impacted during this time, although people are still buying things, it's not at the same level. So I do expect constitutional revenue to go down. We won't really see how much it's going down until August, maybe June. June will show the March and April collections and August is going to show the May and June collections. So we'll have a better idea at the end of June, you know, some of the impact and see what actually comes out of that constitutional piece. And then the CBTRS piece is subject to appropriations. So if that amount is going to change before fiscal year ends, so the June or the August payment, the legislature would have to take action. So if the legislature takes action to do a negative appropriation, we could see a decrease there as well. I'm confident that there will be a decrease in fiscal year 21 for the statutory piece or the CBTRS piece. To what effect? I have no idea. The state isn't really sharing any estimates yet. Like I said before, they were relying and have referenced this U of M study and that is estimating the shortfall of $2.6 billion in the state's fiscal year 20 general fund and school aid fund budget. And then an additional shortfall in fiscal year 21 of $3.2 billion. So this is significant. This is nearly 10% of that budget. So it's really going to be, you know, discussions at their budget level to figure out what the impact is to the city of East Lansing. Moving on to the 289 money, sorry, I'm still on that one, Nicole. The 289 fire protection funds is budgeted at 3.2 million. That is the amount we received in fiscal year 20. We felt that was a confident number to weave in, you know, talking to the state. That is, again, an area that would take legislative action to reduce what they want to fund it at. So hopefully, that's a little bit safer, but it's still subject to the revenue stream. So if the personal property use tax goes down as far as that revenue source, there is potential that there won't be enough funding to fully fund every municipality, even though that's what the law states we need to be doing or they need to be doing. So I'm less concerned about that one, but I still have some concerns there. Then the remaining amount in the intergovernmental revenue is all grant-related. The court has some specialty court grants. That should not be impacted to my knowledge. The police and fire department have some grants. And then we have the sidewalk money from CBBG. And as Amy touched on earlier, we're recommending that that be removed from the general fund and be utilized for housing assistance efforts instead. This will be a corresponding revenue reduction and an expenditure reduction. So the net impact to the general fund is zero, just less CBBG sidewalk work being done. Okay, Nicole, you can move to the next one now. The next large item is the transfer from the income tax fund. So as you may recall, we decided to have the income tax fund be a separate fund and then we move money to the funds as appropriate based on the charter. The transfer into the general fund from income taxes estimated at 6.5 million. Again, that's pre-COVID. 5.7 million would be to make the general fund whole. That should not be impacted. And then the 805-320 is the 20% public safety allocation. So that's where we could be impacted. If income tax revenue goes down, that 805 is going to go down because it's a 20% calculation. So as you're all aware, I mean, COVID-19 is going to impact us. Businesses have been closed, people are working from home, unemployment's not taxable and really the amount is unknown. I'll talk about a lot of this more in detail when I get to the income tax fund. But this is, you know, I was cautious and very, I would just say very cautious to even give estimates on income tax pre-COVID. And so I'm even more concerned now trying to estimate that information. Referencing the U of M study, they are predicting that Michigan unemployment rate will be at 23% by the end of the second quarter of 2020. This is significant. This will be a peak for the state of Michigan if that really happens. You know, the question is, how long will it last? Will people continue to work remotely now that people have started to work remotely? Will they continue to work remotely in the coming year? So there's a lot of questions about the income tax. And then I'll highlight some other revenues and risks. So I really feel like pretty much every revenue line is going to be impacted by COVID-19 in some form and at some time. It might not be this year, it might be 21, it might be 22, but every single line item is going to be impacted. So fines and forfeitures, we budgeted 2.0 million. This is parking fines and ordinance fines. Clearly, this will be impacted as we have less people in the area and those that are in the area are staying home. Licenses and permits, this is building permits, engineering permits, housing licenses, business and restaurant licenses, 2.1 million. You know, we'll have months of shutdown. This will result in lower revenue, to what extent is unknown. When will development pick up? Will people be doing home improvements? So many to be seen questions. Charges for services is budgeted at 3.4 million. A big piece of this is the ambulance charges. We also have court costs in there and then services provided to MSU by police and fire. This is primarily events, whether it's football, basketball, all of those things that they help, that the city helps support. MSU does pay us for those services. So without events happening, we will see a decline there as well. And then it also includes Meridian Township mechanical, electrical and plumbing inspections. So the impact on their economy over there and how many developments and inspections they need will also impact our budget. The franchise fees, are budgeted at 1.8 million. The cable franchise fees make up 300,000 of that. This does continue to decline as cable alternatives have been expanded. So whether it's Hulu, Netflix, the like, we're seeing less and less cable franchise revenue. And then the BWL franchise is coming in just under 1.5 million for our estimate. And that hopefully will remain stable and is dependent on electric usage and rates. So that's general fund revenue. If you guys want me to pause now and address any questions about revenue, I can do that.
Any questions, Councilmember Greg? Councilmember Greg, you seem to have frozen. There you go. Can you start over?
Okay. Yes, I had a question about the license and permit fees. Theoretically speaking, those fees are determined by staff hours that it takes to facilitate those fees. Is that, am I like in the ballpark on that?
Can you repeat? I couldn't quite hear you.
Oh, sorry. So the licensing and permit fees are supposed to be determined based on the staff hours that it takes to facilitate those? So for permits, then the staff isn't working on them, right? I mean, all the staff still working.
Yeah, the big picture is... The goal in the housing and building is that the fees charged and collected would offset the expenditure. So kind of like a business-type activity. So the fees are set based on the expected expenditures.
Okay. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. Just a random question in charges for services. So there is a new MSU president, obviously. Has there been any indication of a change in direction on those fire and police costs? Or has there just been an indication that that'll remain as it has been for the past decade and a half or so?
So I can quickly, yeah, I could quickly step in on that one. So there's two different areas that we get primarily our funding from. One is, as Jill mentioned, the reimbursement for game day type activities. So we have people come in maybe on overtime, they work in the stadiums, they work at the traffic duty and they're compensated by the department, by the MSU for that activity. So it's kind of a reimbursement. Then there's also a separate fire support contract that MSU provides to East Lansing for fire protection for portions of the university that are outside of the city. That's something that has a long history that has been in place for many years. So as far as we know, if there's not activities, we probably wouldn't be reimbursed because there's not game day activities. We also wouldn't have potentially the overtime. So there would be, you know, savings there. But in terms of the fire contract, we've heard nothing different from MSU except over the years that that's continued in a steady fashion.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Feltbush.
All right, so I'm just going to highlight some of the personnel changes. Again, you can go to the personnel summary at the beginning of the document and see more detail, but just wanted to run through things that were affecting the general fund. The 54B district court. The 54B District Court, we're moving one part-time position to a full-time position and freezing the one court recorder secretary position. We're also increasing some court law clerk contingent hours. The city clerk is adding a part-time administrative secretary position. And also increasing the contingent hours for temporary election staff by 1,620 hours. And this is in answer to, I guess, the same-day voter registration and the amount of people that showed up in March on, on Election Day. In the police department, it looks like there's a lot of changes, but it's really a one-for-one. So we're switching the pace supervisor and the record supervisor to two sergeants. And then changing the custody, custody and evidence supervisor to a police officer slash quartermaster. On the fire side, we are adding three full-time positions, two firefighter paramedics and one fire inspector. And we're also increasing the cadet contingent hours in hopes to add additional cadets. And I will note that three firefighter positions are being funded by a SAFER grant. 75% is covered the first year, as well as the second year, with the third year being at 35%. So we have some grant funding to assist in those costs. Under planning, building, and development, we're adding a housing intern. We have a reclassification of a CD analyst to an operations analyst. And then we have some changes in contingent hours primarily due to the census. So we had hired additional interns to help with the census. And we're, won't have those interns, but we are increasing the general intern hours. So net effect is reduction of 668 hours there. So if you looked at page four and five of the document, that kind of gives you a general fund summary. So I'll highlight the major categories here. Personnel costs increasing 808,000. That's 2.7%. Overall, that's really a minimal increase, given that the cost of living adjustment is 3% and that the MERS contribution increase was so high. And then of course, the personnel changes. But we've had some things that have offset those increases, primarily being there's fewer retirements expected in fiscal year 21. We have about 117,000 less in payouts in '21 than we had planned for in '20. In addition, many new hires are opting for the med buyout. So presumably, they're on their parent's health insurance. So as younger employees hire in, they're still young enough to stay on their parents, they take the med buyout instead of going on the city's plan. So this is kind of a new phenomenon for us, but it does create savings for the city. As George mentioned, as we move forward, any position change or vacancy will be evaluated prior to making any decisions as we move forward through this pandemic. And then just another highlight that the MERS supplemental pension payment of 2.5 million is in this number. Operating costs are increasing 318,000 or 3.2%. This is items such as operating supplies, contract services, repairs and maintenance. The vehicle and computer charges are internal charges, utilities, and training. Some of the newer things in fiscal year 21 are some enhancements to election-related equipment and supplies. Installment year one of five to replace the police department tasers. Funding for support of a public safety oversight committee, as well as diversity and inclusion training for all city employees. And then a conversion of paper documents specifically for building department to move to electronic document storage and access rather than the hard copies stored over at the HANA or up in their department. So this is likely an area, operating costs is usually the area in capital that we would focus on to identify solutions to any potential reduced revenues. But the total operating costs really aren't that much. The city's primary expenditure is really in personnel. So as we move forward, you know, this is, this is, these are tough decisions that we're going to have to make, tough decisions that we're going to have to recommend. So once we see that impact on revenue, you know, we'll have a better idea of what we can do to move forward. Moving on to the next slide, capital outlay. So there's $317,000 of capital outlay in the general fund. There's 77,000 in the fire department. This is for a decribulator and an ATV trailer. And then in the playground equipment, that's parks maintenance, there's $15,000 for some playground equipment replacement. And then of course, we have sidewalks. So originally, it's $225,000 of sidewalk improvement, but we will be reducing that by 100,000 or proposing that reduction with the CDBG reallocation of funds. For transfers out, this is where it shows what, what does the general fund subsidize? So Parks and Recreation, 2.1 million. The budget does allow for an inflationary increase from the '20 amount. Also, a $40,000 one-time amount to help repair portions of the HANA building exterior. This is one of those areas that we're going to see some significant impact from COVID-19. So with the closures, we still have costs that we're incurring. We do have some savings from staffing and the like and not running the programs, but there are still costs and, and we're not receiving any revenue. So this is an area, and I'll touch on it a little bit later, but this is a significant area of concern for us. And we'll really need to monitor this one closely. That will impact both '20 and '21. The seniors fund has a transfer of 145,880. This is the first inflationary increase they've seen since fiscal year 18. They have had other sources of revenue and endowments that have really helped them maintain their program and not need additional support from the general fund. The public art fund is slated to get $25,150. The majority of that is for the arts commission and the funding of their grants that they, they give out. This is the same amount as fiscal year 2020. And then the percent of art requirement would be the 7,650. And that's a formula based on capital, the 1% of capital. Art Festival Fund, $10,000. This is a kind of a flat amount that the general fund has contributed to the Art Festival, Art Festival Fund. It's likely going to need an additional amount in fiscal year 20 to keep it out of a deficit. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit later. And '21 may also be impacted, but that's yet to be determined. The debt service fund transfer is $54,050. This is to fund the facility improvements from 2008. And the final maturity on that is fiscal year 2028. So we have a few more years of contributing there. Then there's the capital improvement fund. So $528,000 is scheduled to be sent to the capital improvement fund. $298,000 is for facility improvements. $150,000 is for infrastructure improvements. This is specifically the HANA parking lot. So the, the desire to resurface the parking lot and redo the sidewalks and curb cuts. And then there's an Avondale Square subsidy of $80,000. Lastly, there's the garage fund, a $40,000 transfer. And this, this was the idea of purchasing a pool vehicle for all employees to use, whether it's to attend trainings or do other work-related travel. So overall, on the general fund, you know, pre-COVID, very positive. Post-COVID, eh, unknown. But fiscal year 19, we ended with $6.8 million in total fund balance. 5.5 million is unassigned. And that's really the number we look at is what's unassigned, meaning available. That represents 15.4% as an, as a percentage of expenditure. So top end of the, of the council's policy. Pre-COVID and 2020 projections, you know, we planned on basically breaking even. That will not be the case. We will need to use fund balance in fiscal year 2020. I guess the positive here, in my opinion, is we do have a good amount of fund balance. Definitely not enough to get us through many years, but I think it can take the hit in fiscal year 20. You know, looking forward, we're going to have to find solutions. But we're not in a situation where we can't afford to use some of that fund balance. The '21 proposed budget, again, was balanced. There was no planned use of fund balance. We will have to reconsider where we're going, what we're doing. So we'll be working through the next few months, trying to figure out, you know, what we want to recommend, where we can reduce expenditures, what's the level of reductions in revenues. And then I do want to highlight, there's a couple of things not included in the budget document. So the proceeds from the sale of parking lot number four, that is not in the budget document. So the revenue is not recorded in the budget document, nor are there proposed expenditures. Also, if we're able to sell the vacant West Road property, those proceeds are also not part of the budget. And then, as I always say, I always recommend any one-time sources of revenue be used for one-time expenditures, whether it's capital or additional pension payments. So that kind of wraps up the general fund. I guess that's another good stopping point if people have questions.
I have a question, Jill. So in this era of possible forbearance for businesses and individuals, is there anything that you're hearing that we might be able to spread out our pension payment a little bit longer because of COVID? Do you know if MERS is talking about that? Or if, like our Avondale Square debt that we're paying, is there any way? And I know that postponing doesn't really help because we eventually have to pay, but if we're looking at a short, steep recession, you know, one-time pushing off of a liability for a year might make all the difference in us being able to pay it without sending our fund balance to zero. Are we, are you seeing any of those possibilities?
Can I just jump in quick? So that's what I mentioned about the timing of payments. If we want to look at the timing of payments, the fact that we have, we have a lot of mandatory payments through MERS, obviously have to make, but some of that is discretionary. So the $2.5 million would give this council some flexibility to wait on that payment. Obviously, we want to keep making progress. If we absolutely can, we want to. But, but we have some flexibility, particularly in that payment, because that really is discretionary. Our goal would be to want to make it, to try to continue to make the great progress we've been making. But that gives us a lot of flexibility without having to get to the mandatory payments. The mandatory is about $9 million, $8.5 million to $9 million pension payment. This would be over and above that. So we do have some flexibility on the discretionary stuff that we're budgeting to do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
So obviously, we're doing this in a virtual fashion and fewer, fewer meetings than we normally do the budget process. Since we're not going over individual departments, would it be useful for, if I have questions on individual departments, for me to just submit them in writing? And then that'll be on the next council agenda as, as questions that were answered? I just don't want to take up unnecessary time.
That's very thoughtful. That's very thoughtful. And I was going to ask George to review how we're going to do those questions like we did last year. Go ahead.
Yep. So we do have the people available. If you have a question you want answered, if Jill and I can't answer it, we have the directors on the line and we can try to answer those. If you'd like to put, submit them in writing to, to Nicole, we can compile, compile those as we've done in prior years. Any questions to us, we will compile, we'll give to finance. They will work through and come up with answers from them and the directors in writing. We'll compile all the written questions and answers, and then we'll have them for the next budget meeting to provide to council and the public. So everyone can see the benefit. All council members will see the benefit of all questions and answers, and we'll have that for you to share. Of course, if you send something like the day before the meeting, we may not have an answer. But we'll do our best to get everything up to that point, get written answers for you on all the questions from the directors if needed. And we'll have that all in writing to share with everybody. Does that get that, Jill, for you?
Yep, that's correct. We would include it in the agenda packet likely.
Councilmember Stevens?
The public can see it as well.
So one of the, one of the reasons why I brought this up specifically is just because we do have two new council members. I, during my first year, found it incredibly useful to hear from the department heads. And I understand that it's significantly more difficult to do that. We have less time to do that. But I would also request that, because the general fund does touch on so many departments, there's a lot of staffing changes, there's a lot of operating cost changes, that maybe those staff members, if it's not too much of a burden, be available at the next budget meeting as well. So if newer council members or us quote-unquote veterans have follow-up questions for those department heads, we could, we could get those answered at the next meeting as well.
Yep. So we're also going to have a couple of breakout sessions over the coming two weeks where we'll have all of the various funds talked about. So there will be more in-depth conversations from Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Parking, all of those different areas will have more attention. But we certainly can have all of the directors on those calls to answer any specific questions.
Sure. And I, I'd just ask as well that we be especially cognizant of, of public questions as well, just because not going to necessarily get the opportunity to go in-depth into each, each department area. So if there are questions on that, we'd be responsive. So thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yeah, just want to indicate that I'm very reluctant to approve a reduction of any, even the $2.5 million extra payment that we have for pensions. We're either going to have to make those payments and find a way to make those payments, or at the end, we're going to have a mandatory payment that is going to eat up that $2.5 million anyway. And it may be down the road a little bit, but it'll continue. Then it'll make it even harder for us to reduce our mandatory payment. And you know, the objective of the income tax and all these extra payments was to get us down to a reduction in our actual mandatory payments over, you know, on an annual basis, which then frees up more money to use for other programs within the community. So really, we need, I think, it'll take a lot of convincing for me to vote for that. But I think we need a presentation on that so that the newer members are fully familiar with why we did all this stuff, okay?
If I could, Mayor, could I just jump in quick with that answer? So I agree with you completely, Councilmember Meadows. And we have been pushing hard over the past five years to make all the supplemental payments we can. We absolutely want to continue that. I was just leaving it as a bailout of the, of the most extreme option, where that would be money that the council could make decisions on. But absolutely are intent to continue to make progress on the pension issue because that, you know, that, our goal is to be out of that, hopefully 12 years out from now, that, that we're out from under that burden. So I agree with you completely.
Councilmember Stevens?
I, I'd just like to say, I, I second what Councilmember Meadows say. That is something that would take a heck of a lot of convincing on my end. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Jill? Okay, where are we now, Jill?
Now I'm going to move on to the income tax fund.
Okay.
So this slide really just kind of lays out each year. So fiscal year 19 is the first column, lays out that we received $4.6 million in revenue. We had $68,000 of administrative costs. That resulted in a fund balance sitting in the income tax fund of 4.6 million. That's a lot of money that's sitting there. But remember that in our 12th year, we will have a reduced property tax rate, which means reduced property tax revenue. And we will only have six months of income tax revenue. So my recommendation is that we hold this money back for that year. In addition, it helps with our cash flow purposes. So as we were used to having property taxes pretty much come in all in July, August, September, we no longer have that with the income tax in place. So it's a much longer drawn-out process or longer duration of collection. So having that extra cash flow is beneficial for us. In fiscal year 20, the amended budget was at $9 million. Not going to go through all of those details. You can, you can look at those yourself. Our 2020 projections, again, pre-COVID, and hopefully shouldn't be impacted too greatly because we're basing this off of the, the tax year 2019 data. But it would be $9.9 million in net revenue. We would have $414,000 in administrative costs. We would transfer 5.4 million to the general fund. We would make a supplemental pension payment of $2.5 million. And then there would be the 20% allocations, 20% to public safety, 826,540, that would go to the general fund. And then the other 826,540 would go to various funds for facility and infrastructure improvements. The '21 budget, again, pre-COVID, was projected at 10.2 million. We projected a 3% increase in revenue. And that was based on some of the state's estimates of what income tax would grow. That would also, so that would give us 481,000 of admin costs, $5.7 million to transfer to the general fund for the reimbursement for property taxes, a $2.4 million pension payment, and then 805,000 for public safety and for the facility and infrastructure improvements. So that was kind of the base layout of where we thought we were going to be. Next slide, I kind of talk about what, by tax year more than fiscal year. So as of this week, April 27th, for tax year 2019, we had growth collections from withholdings and estimates equal to 11.6 million dollars. We had return payments, so payments that were made along with returns of $465,000. This is an area that I don't expect to stay that high. In the first year, quarterly estimates were not required. So I would expect some quarterly estimates to be increasing in tax year 2020. Otherwise, people will have to pay penalty and interest on those amounts due. Refunds processed to date, only $26,000. So this alarmed me, very low number. But with COVID-19, the processing center is down substantially as far as how many people are there and working. This is only refunds for returns that were received as of February 10th. So there is nearly 4,000 returns sitting there that have refunds due, and we're working on getting those out in the coming weeks. Again, the deadline for filing the returns was extended to July 31st. In tax year 2020, so we're in tax year 2020, we have been getting collections from withholdings and estimates, and thus far, thus far, it's $2.8 million. And then just a reminder that the quarterly estimated payments, which were originally due today and June 30th, have also been extended to July 31st without penalty. So with all of this happening, this is still difficult to predict any kind of precise amount. We don't have a full year under our belt. We don't know how much we're going to have in refunds. I already mentioned about quarterly estimates not being required in 2019. That's going to change, you know, how much we get throughout the year versus at the end of the year. We still don't really know what our administrative costs are going to be. We have a contract with ISI. They are doing all the processing for us, the auditing, the follow-up letters, all of that. Everything is a per-item fee. So until we have a good sense of how many returns we're going to have, how many letters, how many audits, we really don't know the exact amount of our administrative costs. And then, of course, there's COVID-19. I've already touched on some of these things. But unemployment's not taxable, people working remotely, people using accrued time, what will the duration of the stay-home order be? When will the businesses be open and, more importantly, be fully staffed? I mentioned 21 used a 3% increase assumption. We know that's not going to be the case. I already mentioned the 23% unemployment rate. I found this a little bit interesting in, in their documentation that they don't expect a rebound to pre-COVID until, until, to pre-COVID rates until the fourth quarter of 2022. So they're looking out 30 months. That's a significant amount of time, probably realistic. But, you know, that, that is concerning from an income tax perspective, also just from an economy perspective. So they're also projecting that the decrease in statewide income tax revenue will be 14%. There's some municipalities out there that are talking about budgeting 30% reductions in their income tax revenue. You know, I'm not ready to recommend a 30% reduction because I don't have that comfort level, but when I started seeing some of these listserv comments, you know, people are talking substantial changes to their revenue sources. One other thing I want to highlight about the unemployment rate is, this is in comparison, the previous peak in Michigan was 16.4%, 16.4%. And that was in 1982. If you want to compare it to the Great Recession, you know, we had a high of 14.4% in the third quarter of 2009. So if we really realize a 23% unemployment rate, this is significantly different than even the Great Recession that we all lived through, you know, not 10 years ago. So definitely an area of concern, an area to watch. Okay, that's the income tax fund. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Meadows after Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you. Um, so, you had stated partially answering one of my questions, but that our council policy of 8% to 15% fund balance, this is something that I wanted to just post to the group as a possible council policy to change just what our policy and goal is for the income tax fund, to align it with what we should be projecting for that 2031, six months. Just because, you know, I don't think we're all going to be around forever, and I think setting that goal as a council is good because it's completely necessary, just because, you know, we do want to have that fund balance. So I just wanted to put that out there. Would, Jill, would that be something we could, obviously, these are like suggested policies, these are goals. Would we be able to set a goal specifically for that one fund?
Yeah, we can include in the policy really any kind of criteria that you would like. You know, you may want to also consider some of the other funds where, you know, maybe we don't care if they have the 8% to 15%. I'm thinking primarily like the Parks and Recreation Fund.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would you mind, and I, I will put this in writing, but I'm going to say it right here as a formal question, would you mind getting some sort of range specifically maybe for the income tax fund that you would believe would be a good goal conservatively to have as fund balance?
Sure, I can do that.
If I might, I think I might want to consider, we might want to consider just saying that we have that final year of, of allocation saved in fund balance and not necessarily a percentage, because basically, we're going to be the same amount we collected now, we'll be essentially short 12 years from now. So I, I certainly like the idea, and I think it's an important one, you know, but, but maybe we just don't do it as a percentage, but rather as saving that final year of allocation. Or we can figure out what that equals in a percentage. But it's really that, that four and a half to $5 million that we, that we have sitting there now, that we collected during the overlap year of the start, that we want to have for that when there's not an overlap at the end.
Yeah, no.
Good idea? Yep.
I, I'm fine with either way. I just want it to be a council policy to have that as, as fund balance, so.
Councilmember Meadows. Uh, you're, you're, Councilmember Meadows, you are muted. There we go.
Along those lines, with regard to that specific fund balance, as I take it, that's the first year's or the first half-year's collection of the, of the income tax. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, but the problem I have with the fund balance is, I don't, you know, we are really limited by the charter change which permitted us to, to impose an excise tax on income. And it doesn't include maintaining any kind of a fund balance. What it does include is specific things that must be spent and, and the net of, of the net income tax revenue, and the net does not include any reference to or definition of a fund balance. So I'd like to see an opinion from Tom Yaden before we make a decision on any of this stuff as to what we can really do with the income tax revenue that we've got coming, okay?
Yeah, we certainly can do that. Yeah, we certainly can have an opinion on that because this really is money that's supposed to replace the, the millage that was reduced. So that is a part of it, but you're exactly right. An opinion would be very helpful.
Okay, that's a good idea. I would like to also caution, Jill, I know that you've already thought about this, but I don't want to accidentally collect income tax revenue that we shouldn't be collecting. So somehow, we need to, even though it's going to hurt, it's better than giving it back after the fact. People who are, are, used to be working in East Lansing, who are now working remotely for these months that they're working remotely, they are not liable for the East Lansing income tax. And at the same time, people who are working remotely in East Lansing who weren't before, they are liable for the income tax. So we need to think about how we're going to get that information out, and I think it might affect withholding as well. Because I'm, I'm positive that, for example, where I work at the MEA, we have a lot of people who were working at the headquarters, and now they're working at home, and I know they have not changed their withholding, so.
Yeah, another thing they would need to do is change their withholding with their employer.
Right.
And then reestablish the withholding when they come back to the office or are working in East Lansing.
Right. And that's going, if they don't do that, it's going to end up in a big refund if they file their taxes correctly, which they may not.
That is true.
Uh, Councilmember Stevens. Nothing. Okay, so where are we now? Anybody else? Jill?
Okay. So I would like to touch one thing on the income tax real quick in response to Councilmember Meadows. I think it's also difficult when we talk fiscal years versus tax years, tax years. So, you know, we're still working through all that, but we definitely will talk with Mr. Yaden on what our process is and how we're doing the allocation before we do it.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the other funds, I am going to go through these pretty quickly. I am talking about more funds this year than I normally would, obviously because of the pandemic and the potential that they're going to need some subsidy or support from the general fund. So Parks and Recreation, they have fund balance of just over $100,000 at the end of June 30, 2019. That's 2.3% of their expenditures. Pre-COVID, they really were on track and they're, we thought there would be minimal change in their fund balance. We're working on a full analysis to determine what additional funding is needed, but right now, the initial estimates are indicating a shortfall in the $300,000 range. So what that means is, at minimum, the general fund would have to send $200,000 before June 30th to keep that fund out of a deficit. And that would mean they would have zero fund balance. So we'll, we'll want to have a little bit of cushion there for them in case expenditures come in in July or August that were not expected, not related to June. This fund will be discussed at the next meeting, which is May 12th, in greater detail, so I'm not going to touch on that anymore. But that $300,000 is the estimate for 2020, and 2021 has still not been fully analyzed, so we don't know the full impact yet for 2021. But I would say at minimum, it's going to be the same, if not more. So definitely an area where general fund dollars are going to need to be used to keep that fund out of a deficit. If we don't send money from the general fund, the fund can go into a deficit. We would then be required to submit a deficit elimination plan with the state of Michigan to say, how are they going to get out of a deficit? I don't really see them out of a deficit without general fund support. So my recommendation is to send the money to them as they are needing it to keep them out of that deficit situation. Moving on to Primetime Seniors, I said before that they have endowment money and their program support, which has been able to maintain their program. They are being impacted by COVID-19 and the fact that their membership and program fees will be going down. This, they may need additional funds from the city, probably not in fiscal year 2020. They have $132,000 at the end of fiscal year 19. The projections and the budget will show you that by the end of '21, they would be down to $54,000 in fund balance, which is 12.3%. And the largest use of fund balance for them is they are contributing $50,000 to the Hannah Parking Lot Project. So that is the big use of fund balance for them. And then on the library, they have fund balance of 1.8 million at the end of fiscal year 19. They projected through fiscal year '21 that they would be at $905,000, which is 26.5% of their expenditures. So again, a large use of fund balance, but this is mostly for capital. There are going to be some HVAC upgrades, roof repairs, parking lot resurfacing, and some sidewalk repairs. They're also rolling out the pop-up mobile library and enhancing digital resources, which in this, in this situation that we're in, digital resources are even more important. This primary revenue source for the library is property taxes, so they probably won't see a significant impact to their revenues, at least for a couple of years. So, you know, at this point, they're probably at a lower financial risk than many of the other funds. They will have some unplanned costs as they reopen the building. Moving on to the next slide, the Art Festival Fund, touched on this earlier, but their fund balance is approximately $13,000. As you know, the 2020 festival was canceled, and a virtual festival is now planned. This is another area that will likely need a contribution from the general fund to keep it out of a deficit. The initial estimates indicated a shortfall of about $15,000. Again, we'll have to consider, you know, how much to transfer, what kind of fund balance we want to leave them with. Computer Services Fund is usually a fund I don't talk about, but with everything happening, I just wanted to comment on it. We are seeing some additional costs, from additional laptops, licensing solutions, purchase of Zoom for public meetings, increased utilization of mobile platforms. As we move forward, I'm guessing more and more people are going to want mobile ability. Recently, when they did the refresh for 2020, a lot more employees did receive a laptop, which in hindsight was a tremendous decision. Otherwise, a lot of us wouldn't have been able to work from home. We would have had to come into the office to be able to do things. Also, we implemented Office 365, which provided a lot of tools and capabilities, you know, primarily Teams internally, that's how we've been holding meetings. So lots of, lots of tools that weren't available before are available now. And then lastly, I want to touch on the DDA. They have fund balance of $896,000 at the end of fiscal year 19. Obviously, COVID-19 is impacting the downtown businesses significantly. The DDA has approved a grant program with 100 businesses getting $2,500 grants, so they're working through that process. That should not use a lot of their fund balance. They're reallocating their project development fund monies to that instead. But there's also concerns of, will they be able to rent Evergreen properties? You know, what is MSU doing? Are they having fall classes or not? Lots of decisions there that will affect the DDA. And then just a reminder that the city is a backstop for the Evergreen debt, as we did pledge our full faith and credit on those bonds. So although the DDA is responsible, if at some point in time they're unable to make those payments, we would have to do that as the general fund.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
Well, I can take questions on that. I'm just going to, I, I'll take any questions on that, yep.
Councilmember Stevens.
When does the library millage expire?
I believe it's 2022.
Okay, understood.
Any other questions? Okay, Jill, go ahead.
Okay, so this slide is really just the slide of funds that we're talking about in the next two council meetings. I just wanted, because the other staff members and directors will be doing more of the talking, you won't have to listen to me again for an hour or two, I just wanted to kind of give you some thoughts to be thinking about, I guess, pre those meetings. Major and local streets, Act 51 funding will decline. You know, less people are out and about, there's less gas and wait tax. And we're going to see that decline. Also, it uses income tax revenue, so if we see a decline there, they'll also have less revenue. That will be talked about on May 19th. The CDBG Fund, we already talked about the reallocation of the sidewalk improvements to housing. I did want to touch on the fact that the budget proposes an Avondale Square supplemental payment to the Section 108 HUD loan. If this is approved and completed, this would be the final supplemental payment that would be paid in full. So what that would mean is all those dollars that we've been pushing to the Section 108 loan would be available for other programming, whether it's housing or sidewalks or whatever. So that's a huge positive. That will be discussed more on May 12th. The CIT Fund, so this is the general capital improvement as well as the parks, relies heavily on general fund, income tax fund and grants. So before we start any project in these funds, we will have to look at what the revenue sources are. If they're general fund or income tax fund, we will probably pause and reevaluate, but those that are grant-funded, we will probably continue to move forward with. And that would be a lot of the parks one, like the Trails and Millage stuff, a lot of BNR grants, those types of things. That, I don't know if I said that, that, those funds are talked about on May 12th. Then there's the Parking Fund. This fund is giving me a little bit of heartburn. Obviously, majority of the revenue comes from user fees. With the gates being open since mid-March, we have no idea when we're opening them back up. There's a huge concern here of the impact on their revenue. A lot of their costs are fixed. You know, they have some repairs and maintenance that could be deferred. They've laid off a few staff people. So there, there's a lot of concern there from my perspective on the Parking Fund. They have 1.8 million of working capital. Fund. They have 1.8 million of working capital. That's as close as I can get to what would be considered fund balance. But 1.8 million is just over a quarter of their revenue. So if we're closed for a quarter, in theory, you know, we're losing that 1.8 million dollars pretty quickly. That will be talked about on May 19 further. Then there's the Water and Sewer Funds. May think, ah, water and sewer should be fine. But we have a lot less people in town. So a lot less students, businesses, restaurants, MSU not using water like they were before. So we're going to see lower bills, lower utility bills, lower revenue. We'll likely have to defer capital projects in those funds as well. And that will be discussed more on the May 19 meeting. And then my final one is really just, here's our revised timetable. We already talked about each budget discussion will be followed up with a summary of our questions, or your questions and the appropriate answers and any attachments. In the past, we've attached it to the agenda so that it's available to the public and to all council members. As George mentioned, you can email us or call us, and we will make sure those get included in those packets for any of your questions. I already talked about what we're talking about on May 12 and May 19. Also, on May 12 today, you set the public hearing for the budget and tax rates. And then on May 26, we would have the adoption of the budget resolution, the tax rate, and the fee schedule. And that's all I have. So I will take any other questions.
Sorry, any questions for Jill? All right, thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, do we need to, to do anything with this 4.4, Mr. Lahanas?
No, we, we set the public hearings already earlier for the, yeah, budget public hearing with such consent. So we can just move on, just information only.
Okay, so item 4.5, Capital Improvement Project Plan Overview, Mr. Lahanas.
Yep, just kicking it over to Mr. Farrenbach for a quick explanation of this process and overview, and then that's it. Tom?
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be brief. This is essentially an item to introduce the council to the, and the public, to the capital improvement program. No actions anticipated today. The capital improvement program is required by state law to be updated annually, and it's intended to provide just a general order of priority for city acquisition or construction projects planned over the course of the next six years. It's considered a best practice in terms of guiding the development and maintenance of necessary public improvements within a framework of sound planning and responsible fiscal management. Programming the improvements is intended to help coordinate the projects and seek any grant funding that may exist. Staff across departments updated our inventory and needs assessments, and we'll be making recommendations in the CIT in terms of schedule, cost, budgets, financing sources, and recommendations for prioritization. We've also included a long-term debt analysis that lays out our current debt obligations and various funding sources based on projects completed. We expect to largely present these items and seek council feedback during the May 12 meeting, as well as during some of the individual budget conversations with council on May 12 and 19. Ultimately, we'll be seeking your approval on May 26, typically as a separate action item from the budget. The CIT, although it doesn't authorize expenses, that's done through the budget process, does give a picture of the expenses that need to be addressed. You'll see it's laid out by assets, City Hall, library, fire station, et cetera, and then by category of needs, such as mechanical, technological, equipment, et cetera. This year, because of the new income tax revenues that are earmarked for infrastructure, the city is anticipating approximately $500,000 per year in additional funds for capital improvement projects. Although this is good news, the draft CIT also highlights that there's significant need for projects that exceeds the city's ability to fund even these additional, even with these additional funds. It's anticipated the council will need to make some really difficult decisions regarding what projects to prioritize. And obviously, the statements by the city manager and the finance director regarding our approach, given the unknowns ahead, also apply here to the extent that fund sources are affected or reallocated to other priorities, and will continue to update the plan accordingly. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Farrenbach. And that is the last item on the agenda. So I will declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.